February 27, 2024, a meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez is on an excused absence with prior notice. Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to item three, Pledge of Allegiance. If you would rise with me and join us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is public comments for items not on the agenda. I'm going to read the same statement that I've read prior, and then it'll be one minute, just as a heads up for folks. Anyone who would like to provide a public comment should fill out a speaker card, and I know folks have been doing that, and then turn it in to the city clerk. Any person wishing to address the city council will be called upon to the podium to speak at the appropriate time, and we'll probably call several up at once, like we have. All statements made to the city council must be made at the appropriate time of the meeting and may not be shouted from the audience. Speakers will be allowed up to one minute under public comment to speak, subject to discretion, which will do the one because of the amount of speaker cards we do have. Members of the public may not defer their time to another member of the public. If the speaker decides not to address the council when their name is called, they may decline at that time. In the interest of facilitating city business, members of the audience must not jeer, boo, applaud, or cause any disruption during the meeting, including times when other members of the public are speaking at the podium. If a disruption occurs, I will call a recess. I will also have the right to request removal of any member of the audience who disrupts the meeting. No member of the audience or person speaking at the podium may approach the council or staff at any time during or after the meeting. Any documents being presented or needing to be presented to the city council can be provided to the city clerk before public comment. Members of the audience are strictly prohibited from entering the area between the podium and the dais, and anyone entering the area is subject to removal. With that said, I'll ask the city clerk if she could call several folks up while we talked, and appreciate it.
Okay. First five speakers are Stephanie A., Guy Kim, Jamal Katut, Camila, and Neda Jamali.
Am I free to go? All right. Good evening, Councilman Salazar. My name is Stephanie, and I'm a resident of San Bruno, District Four. I come to you today to ask you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. As I know you're aware, the devastation in Gaza has grown. The tragedy the people of Gaza are facing is unfathomable. At this very moment, those who haven't been murdered by indiscriminate bombing are dying from starvation. From Gaza to San Bruno, people are losing dozens to hundreds of family members. Could you imagine? This resolution is beneficial to your community, as it shows that we are truly the city with the heart. Nothing justifies this needless loss of life, and let us stand on the right side of history in condemning it. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. We are not going anywhere. This is directed to Rico and Michael. Two months ago, we asked for a ceasefire resolution. At that time, there were about 22,000 innocent civilians killed by Israeli occupation forces. Today, that number has reached nearly 32,000, with almost 60,000 missing and presumed dead. My question to you is, what number, what number of dead women and children is it going to take for you to react? Michael, in our meeting, you told us your own son asked you, "Dad, what have you got to lose by voting yes?" So I'm asking you again, what have you got to lose? Most of the world is calling for a ceasefire, including the Pope, numerous times. Where is your humanity? Listen to your constituents and not outside organizations. The only divisiveness here... I'll skip that. A few days ago, a 25-year-old U.S. Airman, Aaron Bushnell, took his own life because he couldn't, in good conscience, participate in an ongoing genocide. Free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Guy Kim. I'm a District Three resident. Please agendize the ceasefire resolution. Free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
City council members, this is the fourth time I've addressed you about the siege on Gaza and how it directly impacted the constituents of this city. Over 38,000 people have been killed, 14,000 of them are children. I look at my children's faces, and I see bodies trapped in the rubble, dust, blood, and bone, total annihilation. In these times of absolute despair, I am looking to local leaders of my community for moral clarity, for hope. I want to know you're listening and that you're deeply disturbed by the loss of life, that you want to lead with empathy. Today, I ask the city council again to put the resolution back on the agenda. I ask Councilman Michael Salazar to listen to his community and lead the way in the symbolic gesture to stand with humanity and to do the right thing. Lastly, as a Muslim who has been subjected to security policies that separate me from my fellow Americans, the partitions in this room further communicate that people that look like me don't belong in these spaces.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
My name is Neda Jamali. This is my fourth time speaking in front of city council to call for a ceasefire. Today, I am asking Michael Salazar to agendize the ceasefire resolution. You are not affected by the 14,000 children who have been killed over the past 140-plus days. You are not disgusted by the genocide that is happening to the Palestinian people in Gaza, but maybe, maybe this will move you to act. A white man, Aaron Bushnell, 25 years old, active U.S. Air Force member, set himself on fire, on fire, in order to call for the end of the genocide in Gaza. Maybe since he is white, you will care about his life and his sacrifice, like you care about Ukraine. This man sacrificed his life to be heard. Your claim of this is out of scope for city council is baseless. A man in the U.S. military set himself on fire to be heard. Our communities all over the U.S. are affected and hurting. We are all here standing in front of you today alive. Don't ignore our voice.
Can we please have the next speakers called?
Next speakers are Elisa Baeza, John Sadi, Myra Ahmad, Amenah, and Ruba Jamali.
Good evening. Good evening, city council. My name is Elisa, and I am a resident of neighboring South City, and I'm here to support my fellow San Bruno neighbors and, again, to all to agendize a resolution, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. Global issues do impact local communities. This is absolutely a local issue, because the genocide happening is being funded by our tax dollars. So let's not forget, also, that the city council expressed solidarity with Ukraine by flying its flag. So a precedent has already been set for supporting global issues. It shouldn't be any different. As an ally, I implore you to stand with humanity. Don't stay silent and complacent during this ongoing genocide. I ask you to listen to everyone here tonight and agree to agendize a resolution that calls for an enduring ceasefire in Gaza, the free flow of unrestricted humanitarian aid, and the safe release of all hostages on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Myra, and I'm here as a resident specifically of District Three to personally urge Councilman Salazar to agendize the ceasefire resolution. I would also like to thank councilmembers Tom Hamilton and Marty Medina for their allyship with our community. To put things into perspective, I wanted to point out how the death toll in Gaza of 38,000 is eerily close to the current population of San Bruno, so maybe we can all, for a moment, imagine if none of us were here and how heartbreaking that would be for our families and just the world. And I hope by agendizing the ceasefire resolution, we can channel this community's collective grief, that we are feeling so hard over Christmas and now with Ramadan for us Muslims approaching, and channel that collective grief into some tangible collective action that will contribute to peace in this community as well as abroad. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members. Since the last time we showed up, more people in Gaza have been killed. Every time that we show up, asking you to stand with us, the death toll has increased dramatically. We're out here today again and again and again, asking you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. We've already spent several hours going over the facts, the inconsistencies of this council in their support for Ukraine, but exceptionalism for Palestine, and how deeply hurtful it has been to watch this council ignore its city's strong Palestinian presence and its overwhelming demand for a ceasefire. Lastly, I'd like to pose a question to you. If you have a 1% chance of power to make a difference, why wouldn't you? Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Salaam. My name is Ruba Jamali. One of the main reasons that brought me here and made me want to start a family far away from my own and far away from my beloved parents and dear siblings and raise my children here is how much you value human life, where we can feel each other's pain and appreciate each other's smiles and have respect toward each other, no matter how you look or what language you speak. Everyone has value. In the Holy Quran, God, Allah in Arabic, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, said, "We created the children of Adam, honored them, and we carried them on land and sea," meaning the purpose of life is humanity and honoring others. Please don't let us or yourself lose that. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is John Sadi. I'm a lifelong resident of District One. I'm speaking today to ask Councilman Salazar to agendize a ceasefire. The devastation in Gaza is incomprehensible, and I'm beyond shocked that some of my city representatives can remain silent while innocent people are being slaughtered. I tried to explain to my kids why we're coming to the council meeting today, but they can't understand why someone wouldn't want peace or to help alleviate suffering or to call for a ceasefire. I have no words to justify or properly explain why Mayor Medina, Ms. Alvarez, or Mr. Salazar can't see the common sense humanity in voting for a ceasefire. My family and I pray every night for the people in the world to live in peace, especially in Palestine. The death toll is over 30,000 now, majority of them women and children. Your inaction makes you complicit. What voters are asking isn't too much. Mr. Salazar, I don't know your ethnic background, but if your people were suffering in your former homeland, I'd be standing beside you as a brother advocating for peace. I want to quote you from a Patch.com article on August 29th. The support we get as elected officials has come from trust. You have to trust that the people you vote for will do the right thing. Do the right thing, Mr. Salazar.
Thank you. No clapping, please. Appreciate it. Thank you. If you, city clerk, could call the next speakers?
Next speakers are Nuna Jamali, Hiba, Abraham Abugash, Mariana Katut, and Susan Dabit.
These are the last words of Aaron Bushnell, an active Air Force engineer, a man who burned himself to death outside the Israeli embassy in DC. "I will no longer be complicit in genocide. I'm about to engage in an extreme act of protest, but compared to what people are experiencing in Palestine at the hands of their colonizers, it's not extreme at all. This is what our ruling class has decided will be normal: free Palestine." This is where we've gotten. There are people in our own military willing to take their own lives because they can't take the barbarity Israel has unleashed on the Palestinians. Palestinians deserve to live in peace, prosperity, and most importantly, freedom. Let's give the city of San Bruno what they want. Follow in the steps of the city of San Francisco's city council and vote in favor of a ceasefire. Palestinians, Palestinian lives are just as important as any other, no more, no less. Let's make sure we implement the sayings of our founding fathers, that all men, women, are created equal.
Hello, my name is Susan, and I'm a resident of District One. Over 30,000 Palestinian civilians have been killed. If not killed from bombings, they're dying from lack of medical care because Israel deliberately targets healthcare workers and infrastructure. If not killed from bombings, they're dying from hunger and severe dehydration because Israel has chosen to weaponize starvation and restrict aid. Children as young as five are telling doctors without border they prefer to die. It's agonizing. This body has committed to resolutions extending beyond the six square miles of San Bruno. It is your obligation to be consistent in what you deem is within your purview. Councilman Salazar, in 2009, as an applicant to the sitting council, you stated, "The role of the city council would be to represent the people of San Bruno, and the people that sit in those chairs represent the thoughts of the people of San Bruno." Those are your roles. We are the people of San Bruno. We are continuing to demand that you agendize and pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire, unrestricted humanitarian aid, and the release of hostages on both sides. Represent your constituents. Take meaningful action towards an expression of peace for all people. Thank you.
Hey, what's up, y'all? My name is Hiba. I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to you in a respectful manner because I don't think any of you guys deserve any type of respect. People are talking to you way too nice. I'm not going to do it. Sorry. Like, honestly, what do any of you guys even do in your roles? Can you tell me? Like, I legit don't understand what you guys do. I have secondhand embarrassment. You can't even support a watered-down, neutral ceasefire resolution that a majority of your constituents want. You are not going to liberate our people, obviously. You're living in the West. You're complicit in the same system that oppresses us back home. We know that. You're not going to stop the genocide bankrolled by our country. You probably profit off of it. Let's be real. This resolution is simply a symbolic gesture that you hear your community's needs and stand with them. You had a community member tell you that they lost over 60 family members. Did you reach out to them? Did you reach out to any of your Palestinian community members in the last five months? Not only are you, not only are you dehumanizing your constituents, you are criminalizing us. How do any of you sleep at night?
Your time, your time, your time, your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council. My name is Mariana Katut. I'm a lifelong District Three resident. I'm here to ask you, Councilman Michael Salazar, to agendize the ceasefire resolution. Since you last ignored our calls for ceasefire, Gazans have been pushed to Rafia, the southernmost part of Gaza, where they were told it would be safe. Israel has threatened to begin bombing that region at the start of Holy Month of Ramadan. Our brothers and sisters in Gaza deserve to celebrate in peace. This time is now. Use your power to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. You raised the Ukrainian flag twice. Why is it so hard for you to simply say ceasefire? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we call the next speakers, please?
Next speakers are Juliana G., Devante, Nora Alayyan, Ola Sadi, and Eleni Katut.
My name is Nora Alayyan. I've experienced racism while growing up in Palestine. When I married and immigrated to America, my Palestinian citizenship was revoked from me. I'm no longer a citizenship of my own home country. Instead, I was replaced by a settler. 200,000 settlers in Israel are granted dual citizenship, while I have to visit my home as a tourist. If I want to go home, I have to hire a lawyer to advocate for me to return. Meanwhile, settlers born in America, Europe, are encouraged to move to Jerusalem so they can further displace Palestinians. These are the same settlers that are the first to leave during wartime, compared to the Palestinian Gaza that refused to leave the land they lived in for generations. Refusing to call a ceasefire after hundreds of Palestinians and allies showed up in support for Gaza is racism. Refusing to advocate for Palestinian Americans is racism. Refusing to support the majority of San Bruno residents is racism. Free Palestine.
Good evening. My name is Ola Sadi. I'm from Gaza. I just want to talk about children. I think the rights of the children to live their childhood normal, go to school, get some education. If they get sick, they have to go to the hospital as normal. The situation back home, it's nothing like that. I'm going to talk about my nephew, which is, this is just one case of thousands of cases back home, which is autistic kids. I call every single day to make sure these kids are good because my sister-in-law, she told me that her son, he doesn't know what he's doing every time there is a bombing. He's like running, screaming, put his finger in his ear, he's like screaming, bombing, bombing, ask his mom and his dad, "Take me out to buy candy." He thought if you go outside to purchase a candy, he can see and find the safer place, but there is no safer place in Gaza. We should stop this one for these kids. Ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members. I'm here to urge you to vote yes to agendize a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. San Bruno cannot stay silent in the face of the genocide. I'm horrified with the images and videos coming out of Gaza. It's unbearable. No community should ever go through such violence and catatrophy. I firmly stand with my Palestinian Arab community members. The safety and acknowledgement of our community members is essential. This resolution will not divide us, but bind us closer together. As an ally, a black man in Bay Area, I urge our city leaders to stand with humanity and call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, free flow humanitarian aid, and a release of all hostages on both sides. Stand on the right side of peace and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Eleni Katut, District Two resident. As you've spent these last months doing nothing despite our calls for a ceasefire, you have made it abundantly clear to your community that only white lives matter. You raised the Ukrainian flag twice, but can't even utter the word ceasefire. The hypocrisy is glaringly obvious, and we are here today to graciously give you a chance to redeem yourselves. Councilman Salazar, your Facebook banner features a quote by Martin Luther King Jr. that we likely have all heard before. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. How exactly does doing nothing drive out hate? As you contemplate the right thing to do, remember that Martin Luther King Jr. also says, quote, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter, and the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who, in times of great moral crisis, maintain their neutrality." Thank you.
Please. Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Juliana. I'm a resident from District Four. I'm asking Councilman Salazar to agendize the ceasefire resolution. In Gaza, all aid is being restricted and withheld due to blockade. Therefore, it's important that we speak out against this genocide and the slaughtering of innocent civilians. Agendizing a ceasefire resolution will promote peace and unity for our community. It will allow your constituents to feel safe in their community as we take action locally about this global issue impacting our San Bruno district. So I ask you to join other Bay Area cities like Richmond and Oakland who have agendized a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hi. Shame is compulsory. I believe shame is the most difficult emotion to live with. Anger lifts and sadness lifts, but shame does not go away with mere time. It requires forgiveness. With shame, people understand the choice they have to make. You must either change, or you will carry the shame in your body for the rest of your life. So today I say, I shame you. I shame this country. I hope you carry the shame for as long as you live, and I hope you know your children will carry the shame. Michael Salazar, you will pass down the shame to your son. And so if you do not feel shame, you are not human. If you do, the only way out, the only way to remedy it, is to stop the genocide. I visited Auschwitz last year, and let me tell you, the disgust that people feel visiting these places, the disgust you feel towards people who did nothing during times of genocide, it does not go away. So I can guarantee you, I promise you right now, decades and decades from now, people will still hate you. So I hope you do something about that.
Can we, city clerk, call the next speakers, please?
Next speakers are Delaney Wu, Janine Sayaj, Mahawi, Nicole Beckett, and Kinda D.
My name is Delaney, and I work in San Bruno. I'm calling on Councilman Salazar to agendize the ceasefire resolution. 38,066 Gazans have been killed. That's about 90% of the population of San Bruno. It is imperative that we speak out against this genocide. It is our duty to do so. What are we even doing if we can't even say that killing people is wrong? That killing children is wrong? That starving people is wrong? That bombing hospitals is wrong? Agendizing this ceasefire resolution is the tangible step you can take to show this community that you care for them, their families, and the lives of here and in Gaza. We again call on Councilmember Michael Salazar to agendize a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Janine Sayaj. I am a homeowner and resident in San Bruno, District Four, here to ask Councilman Michael Salazar directly to agendize a ceasefire resolution. As a Palestinian and as a human, I wholeheartedly believe that this genocide needs to end. We are all humans. We all feel love in our hearts, and I'm sure each and every one of you truly would not want to see this happening to anyone that they love and know. I'm sure you all are against innocent lives being taken, and I just urge you to really, like, think from a place of love and know that there's never a wrong time to change sides and to really be on the right side of humanity. It's been extremely heartbreaking for all of us to witness what has been going on in Gaza, and I just really urge you to make the right decision and agendize the ceasefire. Thank you.
Hello, I'm from District Three, and I'm here again to request that you agendize the ceasefire resolution. It is absolutely ridiculous that we have to go through this yet again. If by now you do not see the criticality of this human rights disaster, then you should not be sitting in those seats. There are plenty of videos and statements given by Israeli officials saying that they want to completely wipe out and kill all Palestinians in Gaza and soon the West Bank. Palestinians have already been displaced back in 1948 at the hands of Zionists, but now they don't want to only displace us, they want to annihilate our existence. People in the U.S. military are haunted by their complicity in killing innocent Palestinians. Aaron Bushnell, member of the U.S. Air Force, lit himself on fire in front of the Israeli embassy in Washington, DC, just a couple of days ago, in an extreme form of protest against the genocide of Palestinians. in an extreme form of protest against the genocide of Palestinians. You should not hold any type of governmental position representing the people if you can't see the human rights catastrophe unfolding in front of you for the past five months.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Nicole, and I grew up in San Bruno. San Bruno is home to one of the most vibrant, populous Palestinian communities in the Bay Area, contributing richly to the San Bruno economy, culture, and livelihood. As a Palestinian American, it deeply saddens me to see my brothers and sisters in Palestine experiencing immeasurable devastation while my city here in the U.S. isn't doing everything in its power to stop it. With the death toll approaching thirty thousand, most of whom are women and children, the surviving population is left with complete devastation in its hospital system, infrastructure, food supply, school system, and more. Without an immediate ceasefire, the loss of human life will rapidly rise due to the spread of disease, starvation, and lack of resources. I vehemently urge Michael Salazar to agendize a ceasefire resolution immediately. It is our moral responsibility to act and act fast. We must think globally and act locally while following suit of other Bay Area communities such as Oakland and Richmond who have already passed a ceasefire resolution. It's high time that the city of San Bruno reconsider. What if it was your children under the rubble?
Next speakers are Jim Evangelist, Mandy R., Jacob R., Sandy Gamaraza, and Nicole Hanhan.
My name is Jim Evangelist. I've lived in San Bruno for fifty-plus years. I live on 105 Soto Way. Although my heart breaks for everybody here and your cause, I have support, I'm outraged at this. Who and what are you afraid of? The police presence here is over the top, ham-fisted. I thought maybe you learned the lesson from the choking down of our Posey parade, when I almost expected to see snipers on the roof. I don't know who's giving you this advice, but you have to stop following it. This is unnecessary. We've got restricted parking over here. We have armed guards all throughout this building. Who knows how many? This is unnecessary. Do you know the people that live in this community? There's nothing to fear here. I don't understand why you guys are allowing this to happen.
Hold on, Speaker. Hold on. Please don't disrupt the Speaker. I'm going to give you a little bit of time back.
That's all right. I think I'm done. But I think that you need to understand that the message you're allowing to be sent here with this police presence and this restriction is wrong. And it makes people feel uncomfortable and unwanted. And it's unnecessary.
Thank you. Next person, please. Speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mandy, District 2. Councilmember Salazar, you've had several weeks to reflect on the situation happening in Gaza, and I hope your conscience has implored you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. It's been forty-four days of devastating conflict, thousands of kids, and millions displaced, deprived of basic necessities like shelter, food, water, and medical assistance. As a mother, witnessing children suffer is unbearable. I do need global support while your loved ones are trapped under rubble, starving, and deprived of medical care. This is not controversial. This is not complicated. This concerns respecting human rights and placing peace as a priority for all individuals. I urge you to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Council. My name is Jacob. I'm nine years old, and I go to school in San Bruno. It makes me sad having to be here again to ask Councilmember Salazar to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Kids are still being bombed. Kids are still being starved. Why aren't we doing anything? I care about what's going on. Why don't you? All the kids, all kids are important. They should be protected. Why should we take care of each other? Oh, no, we should take care of each other no matter where we live. I have all these questions because the world is confusing right now. If you care about me and all the kids in the world, you'll show us you care. Please add a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nicole Hanhan, and I'm a lifelong resident of District 2. I'm a mental health professional, and I serve San Bruno as well as the greater peninsula. Recently, I watched a video where a twenty-five-year-old soldier intentionally lit himself on fire as a form of protest against the current situation. It serves as a stark reminder that extreme acts of protest vividly highlight the dire circumstances unfolding at present. Councilmember Salazar, I strongly encourage you to prioritize adding a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. It has been a hundred and forty-four days. In that time, our community has united and provided mutual support amidst the grief, trauma, and relentless challenges. What have you done for your constituents in that time? Throughout this period, there's been a prevailing sentiment that our representatives lack concern for us. The silence has been truly deafening and awakening. While our government may choose to prioritize political interests over human lives, we must refuse to succumb to such moral apathy. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Clerk can call the next speakers, please.
Next speakers are Justin Fang, Thomas Joseph, Rami Asia, Fadi Jade, and Matt Jones.
Hello, City Council. My name is Justin, Justin Fang. I live in District 3. And we are once here, we are here once again asking you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. This is the face of Aaron Bushnell. A couple of days ago, he was alive. Only twenty-five years old. I'm twenty-three. He's only two years older than me and younger than every one of you. We're not asking you to set yourselves on fire to make a statement. We're not asking you to die. We're asking you to make a ceasefire resolution so that young men, young people in Palestine, and people like Aaron, don't have to die so that we can all feel some sense of moral clarity. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Council. My name is Thomas Joseph. I live in District 3. I just want to make some points. I just want to know if you guys know that the position of the State Department and the Biden administration is for a ceasefire and for a two-state solution. Do the members of this council support this administration? Will they vote for mainstream democratic values? Or will they vote for the fascism of Donald Trump? Second point, if you're worried about this only being a symbolic gesture, you're not understanding. The symbolism is the point. The point is that you care. Rico, you've been on this council for twenty years. Michael, this is your second time around. If caring about constituents doesn't move you, then what is motivating you to represent them? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. It's now been well over four months since this genocide has started. We are now at two million people displaced and three hundred and thirty-five thousand children under the age of five now suffering from starvation. That is ten times the amount of children of that same age group in all of California District 15, spanning numerous cities. In addition, we're at forty thousand people dead and counting. Those are only the forty thousand that we know of. It's not the people that have been recovered yet from the rubble. To agendize a ceasefire resolution would only be a symbolic gesture. We are all well aware that you can't and won't liberate Palestine. But you could, at the very least, show your constituents that you care when they feel a pain this sharp and make it known you stand for humanity. A young man set himself ablaze till his last breath to refuse complicity in this genocide. And yet you can't bring yourself to call for a ceasefire. Please rethink your stance and show your humanity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there, Matt Jones, San Bruno resident. Common argument I keep hearing, this resolution is too divisive. We shouldn't have a ceasefire resolution because it's too divisive. I guess by that logic, we should not have tried to end slavery in the eighteen hundreds because that was too divisive. Or maybe we should not have given women the right to vote because that was too divisive. Maybe we should not question all the taxpayer money that goes into endless wars and creates death and destruction because that's too divisive. Let's get to the local level. Maybe we shouldn't talk about parking in the downtown. Maybe we shouldn't talk about affordable housing. Maybe we shouldn't talk about how the anchor of our downtown is a casino. Maybe we shouldn't talk about whether tech companies and their CEOs pay their fair share on taxes because that's too divisive. Your inaction on this issue is actually a stance. There is a cost of doing nothing. This is a classic San Bruno lack of leadership response, being a stick in the mud while we're trying to progress as a society. It's time to move forward. We need a ceasefire now. Stand with us or stand down.
Thank you for your, thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is, hello. Yeah, there we go. Hi, my name is Fadi Jada. I am a resident of Earth because I'm a human. I have feelings. Apparently, some of y'all don't. Let's see. We're here to ask, again, to get this on some docket so we can be voted for for a ceasefire. What happened last time we asked? After that, there's been more bombings. A safe zone, Rafah, has been bombed and destroyed. More starvation. The only thing that has changed? They didn't use a white false verse this time. So here again, we are asking permission. We have to tiptoe around what we want to say. Meanwhile, last time we were here, two months ago, we had the, I don't know what to call them, the opposition of what we want, talking about how we raped and pillaged and beheaded babies. They can say whatever they want, but we have to tiptoe. We have to silence ourselves and be polite and ask. So here we are again, asking. And I'm pretty sure we'll be back again, asking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clerk, if you can call the next.
Yes. Next speakers are Rawan, Wassam Dawwa, Jen, and Hiba Moore.
Hello. I'm only here to repeat the words of the martyred poet, Raffat El-Ra'ir. He was born in Gaza, and he died in Gaza, and he was killed at the hands of the Israeli government. If I must die, if I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and make some strings, make it white with a long tail, so that a child somewhere in Gaza, while looking heaven in the eye, awaiting his dad who left in a blaze and bid no one farewell, not even to himself, sees the kite, my kahuyu made, flying up above, and thinks for a moment, an angel is there, bringing back love. If I must die, let it bring hope, let it be a tale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, City Council. My name is Hiba, and I'd like to tell you a quick little story. This morning, I woke up and I opened Instagram, per usual. But today, I saw a dead toddler in Gaza. And the way he died was a shock to me. This toddler, who has not even had a chance at life, died from poisoning eating bread. Bread that was made with animal feed because there's nothing to eat in northern Gaza. And I'd like to just, one second, just take a look into the audience and see how many people, residents, are here to explain to you why should agendize a ceasefire. But the real question is, why not? Why would you not fight for humanity? Let me leave you with a quote of Albert Einstein, which was, "The problem is not that people do evil in the world, but that people see evil and do nothing about it." Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Wusam, and I live in District 3. We stood here today pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and concluded with liberty and justice for all. The liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. I am urging Councilman Michael Salazar and Mayor Rico to agendize the ceasefire resolution. It's quite shameful that we still have to come back time after time to shift your heart towards humanity. To say that you are uninformed is absurd. The entire world is watching a live genocide for a hundred and forty-five days straight and screaming for an immediate ceasefire, not just in San Bruno. There is a humanitarian catastrophe. This is a call for humanity. Let me remind you that humanity has no boundaries. So yes, this is a priority for San Bruno. I sat here last week listening to you talk about beautifying San Mateo Ave, San Tenyo Hall. Let me remind you that beauty is.
Time is up. Your time is up, sir. Beauty is in the. Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next speakers are Samer Sadi, Aaron, and Amber Abu. I apologize for mispronouncing. Abu. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Samer Sadi. My dad did not want to, did not get to read Mr. Salazar's quote. I'm going to read it. I want to quickly read a quote from Patch.com by you on August 29, 2017. "The support we get as elected officials has come from trust. You have to trust that people you vote for will do the right thing. You have to trust that they will look out for your best interest. You have to trust that they are serving the community and not themselves. I have always done what I believe is right, and I have always listened to the people who have reached out. I hope the fact you are here today means that I have earned your trust to represent you faithfully. I will make sure I live up to it. Mr. Salazar, please live up to your statement and be the person you claimed to be when we all voted for you. Ceasefire in Gaza now."
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Aaron. I've been living in San Bruno for three years. I also work in San Bruno. I also love in San Bruno. My girlfriend is Palestinian, and it's kind of, it's really sad to go home to her and have to watch all these things that are going on. So although everyone is calling for a ceasefire, which I believe should be on the agenda, I really think if, within four months, if this hasn't been done, I think there's something else that's going on. else that's going on. I think there's a Zionist occupation of this body here, which needs to be discussed. That's what I really believe. But I really urge you to put this on the agenda, it's the least you can do. Aaron, there's another Aaron that's in the news this week. He burned himself alive to protest this genocide. Aaron also means mountain of strength. So I'm asking you, are you strong enough to put this thing on the agenda?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Amber Abu Garbia. I played sports in San Bruno my whole entire life. Today, as I'm reaching out urging Salazar and Medina to agendize a ceasefire resolution for San Bruno, over 30,000 Gazans have been murdered. This is over 30,000 people that had dreams for what their life could be one day, what their life and what in an instant were gone. 10,000 of those that are dead are children. Gaza has lost more children in months than San Bruno Park Elementary School District educates annually. I could tell you that these people were loved ones, but you already know that. I could tell you to imagine yourself in the same situations that Gazans are. Yeah, I'm sure for over 140 days, you've had access to many media sources, and they have shown you the atrocities going on in Gaza. But I'm not just reaching out to the fact that I want you to weigh in on an international issue. I'm reaching out because you know that these issues affect your San Bruno constituents as we've showed up many, many times. And most importantly, just listen to the voices of all these people mourning lives lost as if they were your family, too.
Thank you for your comment.
I have no other speaker cards. Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess and then turn back to the agenda. We will begin. Thank you. 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 The City Council, back from recess. We are on item number five, announcements and presentations. Item A, the presidential primary election will be held on March 5, 2024. Vote centers in San Bruno will be located at Carlton Corners, which is affectionately known as the Girl Scout House, at 299 Carlton Avenue, and the courtyard by Marriott, which was there last year, which is located at 1050 Bay Hill Drive. Vote centers will be open on March 2 through the 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Election Day, the 5th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Ballot drop-off boxes are located outside of City Hall at 57 Linden, so it's just on the backside of Linden by Allen. You'll see the big box there. And at the senior center parking lot, which we're at, at 1555 Crystal Springs Road. For more information, please contact the San Mateo Elections Division at 650-312-5222. Item B, issue proclamation recognizing March as National Women's History Month, and that is in the packet. Next, we have two presentations. We'll go right to the first one, which is received general update from the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District, and that will be done via Zoom. I believe we will have the supervisor, Casey Stevenson. We're not hearing -- we're not hearing -- you can see the presentation where it's not hearing. Casey, if we can't hear you, maybe you need to reconnect. And if so, I'm going to go to the next speaker. If -- okay. Why don't we come back? We're going to move on to item D, Cal Cities Legislative Update. So we don't always have Seth Miller with us, but we appreciate you being here. And he is our Public Affairs Manager and has been doing a fantastic job and has been with the position and deals with us and things that affect our community throughout the region. So I will turn it over to you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. Mayor and council member, staff and the community. The organization I work for has been around since 1898, Cal Cities. And I like to tell the little story of when it got founded. That was when we were going from horse and buggy to cars. And the folks in Sacramento had ideas of where the horses should relieve themselves and how that excess should be handled. And cities had different ideas of how it should be done. And while we reconciled that particular issue, the schism between how our affairs should be run at the state level and the local level have not disappeared. And this year, an election year, the state has very different ideas of how local government should be run. And I'm here to go through what is on the November ballot, not here in March, but on the November ballot. I'm not asking for a resolution. I'm not recommending. What I'm giving is the city perspective, the 478 cities that I work with throughout the state, and how state policies and ballot measures affect them. So I'll go through this as quickly and efficiently as I can. Great. As you know, we are a member-driven organization, and several of you have been on leadership groups with our Board of Directors. You've also served on our policy committees ranging from public safety to housing. And every year, we come up with priorities. And this year, the four state priorities, excuse me, are directly related to things that affect local government. Climate change, public safety, investments for homelessness and housing. But the topic I'm going to hit is the first one, which is local revenues and economic development. You know, the way we tackle these matters are through the state legislature. This year, there's going to be about 3,000 bills presented by our Assembly members and senators. We'll track many of those. But the other way we do it is through the ballot box. And there's a ballot measure in March, one item on the ballot related to mental health. And then in the fall, there's going to be about 11 matters. And those matters, as of right now, include these issues here. I'm not going to go into the details on them, but they're relevant. They're important to voters. There are things from referendums on drilling oil, changing the minimum wage, pandemic funding, whether continued or not. And the one that's highlighted is this kind of deceptive one called the Taxpayer Protection Act. And that's really what I'm going to get into here directly. So the proponents are the California Business Roundtable. And, you know, they're a group made up of the biggest companies in California. And there's a statute that we -- I'll show you later and put on the screen of what the actual language is. But these are insurance companies, developers, pharmaceutical companies. And after doing this type of work for about 20 years, you just got to look to who's for it and who's against it to understand the interests. This measure is for big businesses. And who's against it are unions, teacher unions, SEIU, and cities. So I'll reiterate this a couple times, but I want you to get up to speed. The measure's not on the ballot until November. We have a few months to understand it, and that's what I'm here to do, is help you understand this thing. So our analysts looked at what the fiscal impact of this proposition would do. And since 2022, there's been $20 billion worth of bond measures that get passed. Now, these can be various things, a sales tax increase, a property tax increase. But if this measure passes in November, all of those measures are going to be revisited and have to be re-voted on by the public. And those costs, as you know, running elections are up to you. Your city would have to pay for those. And when you run it in 2025, not an election year, it's a very different set of voters that go to the ballot. So these are considerations that the proponents of this bill absolutely know and want to see them all relitigated in 2025. So the way we look at this, clearly is a threat to local government. But what it gets down to is who decides on several different definitions of tax? Now, this gets into the weeds, but is a fee a tax? Is how much you charge someone for a DUI, is that a fee or a tax? These are all terms that are intellectually interesting, but if you're running city government and have to decide that, it's an open door for litigation. And we think that's really who's behind this, is the litigators. They want there to be confusion about what a fee is, what a tax is, and how city government operates. The folks who brought this up are the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. And I've looked at their polls. I don't have them up here, but when you tell folks you're going to stop government from taxing, it's popular. And so their polling looks good on this. It's just if you peel back the onion a little bit and look at who it impacts, it's local government and direct services. And just to look at some of what these, you know, local services and fees are, they're things like emergency response fees, how much your ambulance is charged to go get it, help someone and bring them to an emergency room. Facility uses, park fees. You know, my kid at the soccer field, what that fee is, is up for litigation. So you guys do a fee schedule everywhere. I know the city managers and spend a lot of time on this, and it's the minutia of government. But if that's up for litigation, it should get your attention now, and you should be This idea of voter threshold, a majority versus two-thirds majority, is a valid concern. You want to have people be able to pass measures that matter to them. But in effect, if you move all measures to the two-thirds, we know how difficult it is to get it there. And we know that these charges and fees would then require two-thirds approval of every measure, every fee that you have in your city. So we're talking about a ballot measure, a ballot packet that's hundreds of pages every four years so that you're looking at the fee structure in your city. So now I'm just going to get to the visuals of kind of who's for it, who's against it. This is the opposed group, California League of Cities, the Alliance for Better Jobs, California Teachers Association, the Association of Cities, and the Contract City Association. The folks that are supporting it, in a letter penned in the LA Times last week, are these major companies. Now, whether they know, whether 7-Eleven actually knows that they're paying dues to the California Business Roundtable who's pushing this measure, I don't know. But putting pressure on these cities, and if they're in your city, I would work with your staff to identify how many of these companies may or may not be based here. Now, today is an education, short presentation to get, alert you, kind of sound the alarm. The California League of Cities Board of Directors is launching a campaign. The campaign is not underway yet. The four action items that I'd like you to consider taking are to submit a letter in opposition, join the growing list of elected officials who are in opposition, educate yourselves and constituents about it, and if a resolution is something that seems to make sense, that, too, is fine. What we're up against here is there's going to be big dollars. There's $17 million already on the side of the pro-measure here. In our campaign, we don't have resources. We're not buying ads. We have a local elected officials and local government to do this work. So it's about educating ourselves. And with that, I want to turn it over to some questions, if you have them. And of course, make a quick plug, we are doing division events and activities all the time here. It's great when you make it out, share with your other elected officials. There are four of them coming up in 2024, and I look forward to seeing you there. So with that, I'm open to questions and happy to answer them offline as well.
Thank you very much, Seth. Does anybody have questions at this time? Or of course, Seth is available always offline. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, nice seeing you again, Seth. For, is there an online petition that individual council members could sign on to yet?
You know, there is such a thing. There was a barcode that I have seen. I didn't bring it with me, but if I can follow up with your city staff, I will do that. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So I mean, I like the idea of signing up, you know, individually, but when we saw in the presentation that over 200 cities in California have signed on, they did that through official action of their entire councils or boards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? If not, we know you're always available via email or phone. So thank you for being here and appreciate you bringing this update and information to us.
Pleasure.
Now, we're going to go back to item C, received general update from the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District, and we will -- Bring in Casey Stevenson, please.
I think it's hard to clear. So I figured that was -- yeah.
It does feel, I didn't want to talk about passing a resolution on the level tonight. It just feels like --
Oh, yeah. Well, more campaign.
Right.
But it's, you know, I don't know.
The audience is like, why can't you pass this simple?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
It just feels a little --
Yeah.
But I think it's boring. Bureaucratic presentation takes a little air out of things, don't you?
Yeah.
Mosquitoes are going to be in there.
There are a lot. Ponds, seawater.
Dangerous.
Dangerous. The snail virus.
We're having technical difficulties. It appears that we're not able to get -- I see that Casey is speaking. However, the sound is not coming through the feed.
Okay, so I'm going to, whatever needs to be done on a technical, I'm going to let that try to work itself out. I'm going to move on to consent calendar. Then we're going to go back for a third time and maybe the charm. And if not, we'll have to do another time. Okay, so let's move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented by earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. We have items 6A through F. Is there any for pulling for a separate vote? Seeing none, then let's see if there are any for questions, comments, et cetera.
Pulling two for comment, F?
F, thank you. Okay, so with that, let's go to F. Item F, consider adoption of resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement for construction support services. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Boy, one of the, one of the, one of the primary questions I get asked as a council member is, when are you paving my street? When are you, when are you going to fill those potholes up? And this item here involves the next step that the city's taking to actually do that. And I wanted to bring attention to that because I believe there's a lot of information out there, just that it's, it's not really getting to the public. And it's even a little difficult for myself, that's been on, as an employee here for a number, for almost 11 years, and then on the council for eight years, getting all that information in one place so I can explain where, where does those tax dollars go? And how is it determined for your street to get paved and when? So I was, I sent a number of questions to staff, and I did get answers on it. The answers are good, knowing that as we move forward, after spending $6 million on pavement maintenance, which I believe in one year has never happened in my memory as a, as a former worker and council member, following that up with another $5 million of work that is anticipated to happen in our next budget. So I was hoping that we would be able to share more information with everyone. And I wanted to see if, if our, our, our Public Works Director could, could just give us a, a little bit of an understanding of what these next steps are. So that it's not just a matter of, well, there's a lot of streets on the west side and on the east side, there's no pavement going on. Where on the east side, recently, there's been three, three water sewer projects that have spent nearly $30 million to improve getting new water, sewer, and pavement. So it's, it's interesting. And as we move forward with continuing having district, district elections, then it gets more interesting where people are saying, well, that district's getting more paving. What about us? So I think the, the information, it, staff's working on it. And I was hoping to get a little bit more clarity on, on the direction we're going through staff.
Matt Lee, Public Works. I don't know if I can hear you yet, but you're from the Director of Public Works, Matt Lee.
Matt Lee, Public Works Director, through the chair. You're correct, Councilmember Medina. We are planning for a paving program, a pavement program presentation this spring. We're in the process of putting that information together. Fortunately for us, we just went through our PTAP cycle of two-year rounds where we update our pavement conditions and we take a look at all the streets that we've done in the past two to five years. And we look forward for the next two to five years. And we've done that analysis and we've looked at the various scenarios. You know, one with the current funding situation that we have, one with enhanced funding that we may get. And we've come up with the list of streets. And we're in the process of finalizing that program. We hear loud and clear that the community wants paving. We're definitely aware of that. We also know that the information, like you said, is not easily gatherable to the average citizen. So we're in the process of also trying to put a webpage together that ties all of paving, including pothole repairs in, in one spot. I think paving is one of those, pavement maintenance is one of those programs that aren't actually intuitive in terms of how we go on select streets. And it requires some discussion and education on why that is and how that is and the requirements for that. And so we're looking at taking the time to produce some videos or highlight previous council meetings where we did presentations and kind of consolidate on that webpage so people can go there and actually take the time to look. Our department loves to do paving. You know, if we can get more money for paving, we will pave. We're in the process of trying to receive our patch truck, which is a long time coming. It's, we're hopeful that it'll come at the end of summer, early fall. And so we're, we're just starting to get ramped up. I know that Measure G was passed, you know, prior to the pandemic, but it's starting to ramp up and we're really starting to move on this paving stuff. And like you've indicated, we've seen more paving than we've seen in recent past. And that's going to continue to go. And we're going to be at a point where we're going to actually have a paving program where we'll be doing this consistently every year.
If I can just reiterate, the main part there is that we now have a larger revenue source of approximately additional $4 million a year from Measure G. And the council has been very dedicated to making sure that money, the majority of, overwhelming majority of it does stay for, for our paving projects. And as we'll hear later on today, there's actually a lot more that needs to be done than just paving. But we, we're still committed. So I wanted to also thank staff for the work that's getting done. And I'm really looking forward to the interactive maps that I got a chance to peek at the, the recent paving projects. And I think that'll really help people understand the amount of work that has been done. So, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Director, for the, for that information. And I had intended to pull this item just to, to highlight the, for the public, the important street work that we continue to, to execute. But it was, that was very well highlighted by my colleague here. So I will instead ask a question or make a suggestion, actually. I love the idea of having a dedicated website for streets for people to go to to get all that information. I think that's a wonderful idea. I would suggest that, that when we, when, for the pothole portion of that, not everybody understands that if you see a pothole, you can report it on, on the San Bruno Responds app. We're in the, the season of potholes right now with the, with, in, with the wet weather. And I know even in my, in my own neighborhood, on my own street, that my neighbors have reported potholes and, and seen them get repaired in as little as two days. That's not a, you know, your, your performance may vary. But it, but it's, the, the city's been very, very responsive to that. And so I, you know, I want to reiterate for everyone that, you know, if you, if there's, if there's a bad pothole on your street, you can report it quite easily. And by using the San Bruno Responds app, which is, you can download in the App Store, either Apple or Android, it's called SB Responds. When you report a pothole, it goes directly into the system. So it's not, you know, it's, it's creating a ticket that's already active and, and, and received and in progress. So it's really, really efficient. I encourage everybody to use it. Thank you.
And for me, and also you can track it. So once the ticket is created, you can, you can see its progress through the system. And I think we had a presentation before, which I thought was very well done. Because I think what it is, is slurry, okay, what does that mean? Why slurry? Why not this? And, and the ratings. And I think it gave a good explanation and was a job well done. Maybe it needs to be modified, but there's a lot of questions that are asked. But I know that the number one thing is if I'm on Fleetwood and I'm seeing this, when? And I think that's what needs to be more simplistic for somebody to go and kind of look at their street and see. May not be the answer they want to hear or the year they want to see. But at least it gives them some thought right away if they have that, you know? And, and a little more user-friendly, as, as was indicated. So thank you. Seeing nothing else, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on consent? Please.
Yes, would Stephanie A., Justin Fang, and Justin F., please approach the podium?
Hello, Council. I just wanted to thank you for the clarity and also city staff on explaining the pavement process and explaining the efforts to make understanding and repairing our roads more clear. When I saw, when I saw the map on the agenda, I was very confused because, you know, it just showed a map, you know, drawn lines and no pictures. And so I'm glad to hear that city staff is working on an effort to make it more apparent for the public. Since when I had done my own research and I looked into the PCI, the pavement, or is it PSE? Is it PCI? Okay, yeah. The Pavement Condition Index, the last report I could see was from 2019, and it is now 2024. And although it is just the beginning of 2024, it's some time since we had our last report on the conditions of our roads. And I just wanted to make sure that our city was being equitable and it wasn't just over focusing on the west side, which is where I do live in. And I did want to make sure that our neighbors on the east side were also getting their just attention and getting attention from city council and city staff. So thank you for letting us know of your efforts. And I also look forward to the interactive map where we can really see the city's efforts. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. No problem, okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
I have no other speaker.
Okay, with. No problem.
Matt Jones.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to echo what Justin said. It's nice to see a fresh face in the Public Works Department. I know there were some challenges when I worked for the Planning Division, working with Public Works sometimes because there, there wasn't great communication. And it, it's just good to see new folks. Gives me a little bit more hope. So my question kind of is similar to Justin's around the PCI scores. In other cities, I've seen maps that are available online. I know that you had said, Matt, that, that there's various criteria that the Public Works Department uses in terms of timing for streets. But I just see that, you know, I went to go work for City of Oakland right after I worked for City of San Bruno. And they really were talking about equity with their paving in terms of different neighborhoods. And I know as we move towards a district-based system for council districts, I think that will become all the more important to, to think about that. And, and I guess one more thing I wanted to just add is a couple initiatives that happened, one while I was working here was the Walk and Bike Plan. The other one that happened after I left was the Safe Routes to School Plan. I, I just want to emphasize again, like, I really hope that planners and public works can work closely on these initiatives. And that, you know, these, these projects are integrated. Like, I'm just looking at this street list. And if you're going to be dealing like repaving on Niles, I'm pretty sure the Safe Routes to School report says that they want to see some crosswalk improvements for, for kids there. And I just want to make sure we're being intentional, you know, and working collaboratively when we're working on these projects so that we can get wins for everyone, you know? And I know safety is very important to everyone here. If we can pave our roads and, and make our streets safer for kids, I think, you know, that's going to be a good thing for everyone. So I just want to make sure these plans are not living on shelves and they're, they're, that all the hard work that staff put in to adopt these are, that the projects are going to move forward. So, thank you.
Any other speakers?
I have Stephanie A.
I'd just like to confirm, this is for 6E, correct? Okay. All right, well, thank you, folks. I wanted to give a statement on the Huntington Bike Path. You know, I just had some curiosities around why we haven't progressed with the plan for the bike path on Huntington, despite, from my understanding, having the funding, funding that's now at risk of expiring, if I understand correctly. I've heard that part of the delay is in relation to a very minute slowdown of vehicular traffic that this bike path may cause. I think it's important to take into consideration moving forward with this, with this quickly for three main reasons. One, it'll make San Bruno more accessible and equitable. Not everyone can afford to have a vehicle, especially during these times. And then that kind of leads me to point number two, which it'll also help with prioritizing climate, which has been a challenge for San Bruno. And I know that's something you guys kind of want to re-initiate. And then three is that Huntington is already a really dangerous road with people exceeding the speed limit by at least two times quite often. So I don't think any slowdowns would be negative. I think it would be beneficial. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but there are accidents that happen there quite frequently. And in this past July, in fact, a dangerous driver T-boned a car. And last that I heard, the passengers in the car, the pregnant mother miscarried her child. They lost their child, their younger child that was in the car. And all of the other members, the parents and the grandparents, were all severely injured. So I say all this to say that I know that a bike path won't immediately solve these issues, but I think it can certainly assist in that we should make sure that we're taking swift action on prioritizing that. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers? Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. There is, for any other deliberation, comments on items 6A through 6F.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under consent.
Thank you. Motion by Hamilton, second by Salazar to approve consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Passage 4O. Let's go back. Do we, let's try one, one more time on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yay, thank you. Thanks for waiting for me. Okay. Let me share my screen there. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Casey Stevenson. I work for San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. Basically, we're a special funded district by property tax. We serve the residents of San Bruno and all of San Mateo County. And basically, our mission is protect public health in the comfort of the citizens by monitoring for mosquitoes and reducing the population. So everyone can be comfortable and disease-free. Just kind of a little update of our revenue sources. Like I said, we're basically funded by property tax. This area in dark orange here, we've been around since 1916. So we originally started back then controlling salt marsh mosquitoes that can fly and really bother people. Then we, over time, we expanded and now we covered all of San Mateo County. Just a little update, you know, like I said, we, we take care of all the citizens of San Mateo County. So this is all the work we did in 2023 for the City of San Bruno here. 84 total service requests. So those are kind of when we go out to people's properties after people call and be like, hey, I'm noticing mosquitoes, or there's rats in my yard, or there's rats getting inside, or I have a yellow jacket nest on my property. People call in to us and talk to our very nice receptionist, Avina. And then we come out the next day to kind of evaluate the situation and try and help as much as we can. We conducted about 689 site inspections in the City of San Bruno, and 99 of those resulted in a treatment for mosquito larvae. These are kind of just a little update of our service request, the percentage of what we did in the City of San Bruno. So rodents was our number one call we would get. So for that, we come out and do a comprehensive inspection of people's properties, kind of identify attractants, ways they could be getting into your house. Then we provide a nice report at the end, kind of telling you like, hey, these are some things you can do to reduce the chance of rodents getting inside your property. These are just typical mosquito sources our staff see on a daily basis. All of our staff are certified through the California Department of Public Health. So we have to take four tests and then we follow up with CEU units. So we kind of always learning. So we kind of always learning about the newest and best products out there to help control mosquitoes. Some mosquitoes breed in stagnant water, so if anyone ever sees that, please give us a call. We'd love to come out, you know? The more people do the call, the more likely there's going to be less mosquitoes in there and a less chance of transmission, disease transmission. Like I said, these are just some of the concerns of mosquitoes in San Bruno. So marshes, seasonal impounds, creeks, wastewater treatment facilities in San Bruno, South San Francisco, containers in yards, and storm drains. Speaking of storm drains, that's probably our most visible vehicle right here, is this white right-hand-drive Jeep. These is our seasonal staff, and so they usually start in April and they work all the way through November, controlling the mosquitoes in subterranean sites such as storm drains. That's the primary habitat of the West Nile virus mosquito. So as long as we stay on top of these, you can see all these little green triangles. This is the City of San Bruno here. These represent all the catch basins we treat for the City of San Bruno. And so we're hitting these every two weeks in the summertime. In this, in, over the last season, we treated 296,000 catch basins throughout Samatay County. So Mills Field, I'm not sure if everyone knows where this is, but this is basically between 101 and Al Camino. This is kind of a large area. So we treat about 30 acres of land out here that fills in with rainwater. We do this in multiple ways, either on foot or by helicopter. Last year, we did not do any helicopter treatments because we were able to control it in other ways that allowed us. So we have a lot of great equipment we use. This is a picture of some of our staff out there. We have this large 300-gallon tank with 150-foot hose that can put 65 gallons of water out per minute. And so we're able to mix our larva sighting products that control juvenile mosquitoes in there. And this has done a great job of limiting the amount of adult mosquitoes that are flying around. This property is owned by SFO, so we work closely with them to help control vegetation management out here. As you can see, this heavily vegetated area right here is over water. And so when it's stagnant like this and the vegetation's there, it's a great hiding place for mosquitoes. So luckily, working with SFO, they're able to clear these areas out for us, and there's less likely chance of mosquitoes to breed in there. This is just another picture of Mills Field here. We had a lot of rain last year. In January alone of 2023, we had 15 inches of rain, which is a significant amount. If you compare it to this year, we had about five inches of rain. So it's three times the amount. So you can see this is a large area for us to inspect and treat for mosquitoes. This is just example of our staff out at Mills Field doing a treatment with that high-pressure fire hose I was telling you about. This is, that's probably not playing right now. So, oh, there's just a little video of them spraying out there right into the water that's on the other side of those berry bushes. This is Eric Eckstein. He's our technician for San Bruno right now. He's a, grew up in South San Francisco, actually, so he's a native to the area. And this is just him doing all the tons of work he does for the City of San Bruno, protecting public health. This is the San Bruno, South San Francisco wastewater treatment facility. So we come out here, and usually in the hotter months, May to October, we're inspecting this twice a month, basically, and conducting mosquito treatments to keep the population down. West Nile virus mosquitoes do breed in here also. This is kind of just talking about adult mosquitoes, how many we collected in San Bruno and the locations we collected them. This large circle is kind of right by Mills Field, just showing the population. The main mosquitoes we're capturing are all these Culex, Rethorax, Qipipians. All those are the mosquitoes that have the ability to transmit West Nile virus. But the numbers did stay pretty low. For West Nile virus, that's our biggest threat in Samatay County is West Nile virus. So this is a mosquito that can go out and bite people, and it can really affect people of older age or younger age and make them sick, and some people potentially die from it. We did not have any mosquitoes that were positive with West Nile virus in Samatay County in 2023. And so that's a really good stat that we like to throw around out there. And then just a little overall, in Samatay County, we did have two human cases of West Nile virus, but they were most likely infected while traveling. When this occurs and we find out about this, we do go set traps around the neighborhood they live in, just to see if there are any mosquitoes in that area, and then we check and make sure we're limiting the amount of transmission that can occur. We did have a horse that had West Nile virus this year, and so that horse was not vaccinated. That's, that was kind of scary to us, but did it happen later in the season in October? And then again, I'm saying this is Eric Eckstein. You'll probably see him out and about in San Bruno. I'm just talking about the work we do. This is free to every resident, it's part of property tax. So like I said, give us a call. You know, we want to make San Bruno a great place to live and people to be comfortable in not having to worry about vectors and diseases. And let's see. Also, we do have an open house every year, and this year will be June 15, 2024, and you can come see all the great equipment we have and all of our staff. We're very excited about the work we do, and you know, we like to show off a little bit. So please come on by, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Sorry about the technical difficulties earlier. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. We're sticking with it and getting through the presentation, and we appreciate it. I have been to the open house, and it, you can drive by it, but until you go in and see the various, the two floors and what it has on the outside, it's extremely interesting. And I think if people have the opportunity, they should go by. Any questions from Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Medina.
Got a question and a comment. So first, the comment is actually a thank you to your staff for coming out to Bel Air's community garden and taking care of hornets or wasp nests. I didn't recognize the person because they had the whole shebang on, so they came out really quick and took care of that, so thank you for that. My question is, is there something that a resident could add to the water that they're collecting from these rain barrels that will kill the mosquitoes and still allow the resident to use the water for gardens?
Yeah, they can. There are, there are some products that they can get over the counter. It's called Natular DTs, and they can put that into the water, and it's still okay to use on, it's actually an organic product, um, recertified.
Can you say the name of that again, please?
Natular, so N-A-T-U-L-A-R, then DT.
DT. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments in regards to the speaker and/or anything under presentations, please?
Yes, we have speaker cards under announcements. First speaker is, I'll call a series. Matt Jones, Kenda D., Stephanie A., and Maha Y. You would please approach the podium.
If everybody could... Could those folks step to the podium, please? And let me ask, since we have Casey there, to the speakers, is there any want for the mosquito vector control? None? So if I say it's okay to go, I don't want to, it's all right? Okay.
Is this for the proclamation one?
No, no, this is on the mosquito vector, the gentleman who just gave the presentation.
Mine was for the proclamation, so I don't know why my name was called.
Well, it's because it's going to, it's under this whole topic. I'm taking it all now at once, but I just want to be able to say goodnight to him if nobody wanted to specifically ask a question on the vector control. Okay. But you're, you're speaking at the right time. This is perfect. Okay, so Casey, let me say thank you very much for your time and your presentation. We'll let you get on with your evening, and then we will continue on with our meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Now, please, thanks.
So this is regarding the proclamation. So your proclamation for Women's History Month is meaningless and hypocritical, given the lack of support for a ceasefire in Gaza. Palestine is a feminist struggle. As feminists of conscience, we cannot and will not remain silent. About 500,000 girls and women are displaced in makeshift shelters that are also experiencing bombardments. Reports detail horrific scenes in Gaza's only-standing maternity ward, which the Israeli regime destroyed on December 17, 2023. Killing 12-year-old Dunya Abu-Mohsin, who had been seeking treatment thereafter a previous airstrike, had caused her to lose both of her legs and killed her entire family. We bear witness to the productive genocide taking place in Palestine by the Israeli regime. We bear witness to traumatized mothers who have to deliver their babies without anesthesia, with doctors using the flashlights on their phones to conduct the operations due to being cut off from electricity by the occupation forces. As Palestinian women and girls of reproductive age are dealing with aerial strikes on their neighborhoods, schools, and shelters in Gaza, they are forced to take pills to stop their menstrual flow in the sheer absence of basic feminine care. Since October, over 20,000 women have given birth under genocidal conditions. We are unable to determine the outcome of these births and the condition of mother and baby. We bear witness to the deprivation of prenatal and postnatal care that puts Palestinian mothers and babies especially at risk of death and forces mothers to give birth under intense bombings on the floors of crowded hospitals with no pain medication. We see women having miscarriages, stillbirths, and early deliveries as a result of stress, trauma, and fear, and babies prematurely dying after birth due to lack of fuel and electricity necessary to maintain their incubators. As a result of the lack of food and water due to the blockade, birthing women are deprived of the ability to properly clean after delivery and have resorted to mass hysterectomies because they are unable to control their postpartum bleeding. Moreover, starvation has made it impossible for mothers to produce milk or to nurse. If you're going to proclaim March as Women's History Month, then do your due diligence and not just jot some scattered, meaningless thoughts. If there is no mention of the catastrophic feminist genocide happening in Gaza, then you're committing a grave injustice to women everywhere. Thank you.
Hello. Today, we heard of a proclamation in honor of National Women's Month. While of course, women and our contributions should be acknowledged, I find a few things ironic about this proclamation, and I'd like to share my thoughts on it. I'm curious why, when honoring women, it's so heavily centered around our contributions in relation to militarism, rather than the countless other ways that women have contributed to society since the beginning of time. I find this especially tone-deaf, given the current state of affairs in this world. And on the note of those affairs, I find it even more ironic that you're keen to honor women, Mayor Medina, yet show little concern for the sanctity and safety of the women in Gaza or the women in your community that you see here today, who have been pleading to be heard and to be helped. Women in Gaza, as you know, are currently unable to access their bare necessities like food, shelter, medical care, menstrual products, and more. Women are losing their entire family lines. Women are forced to watch their children starved to death due to famine and are completely helpless. And not that it should matter, but FYI, the women of Gaza are key contributors to society and not the oppressed group that media always insists on implying. They're doctors, scientists, educators, poets, journalists, artists, and more. I think it would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge all the suffering women of Gaza while acknowledging Women's Month. Let this Women's Month and every Women's Month be in dedication of the real heroes, the women of Gaza and the women across the world that are facing oppression, adversity, and more. Thank you.
I would like to echo some of the comments my constituents just spoke about. Mayor Medina, let's discuss this Women's History Month proclamation that you have presented today. As Women's History Month approaches, let me remind you that International Women's Day also falls within this month. I find it hypocritical that our mayor is the one presenting this proclamation when he has yet to vote against, when he has voted against agendizing a ceasefire humanitarian resolution, one that may have prevented hundreds of thousands of women in Gaza being deprived of basic living needs. Pregnant women are miscarrying at alarming rates. Others are giving birth in unsanitary situations and forced to walk miles immediately after giving birth to find safe zones as hospitals are being raided. C-sections and hysterectomies are being performed without anesthetic due to the lack of medical supplies being allowed into the region. Women in Gaza are being abducted, beaten, and assaulted in all forms by the IOF. We women don't need your pseudo-feminist proclamation. We need actions for justice and equality for our women being, for our women who are being in dire need of humanitarian aid. We need a ceasefire.
Hi there. I just wanted to say that it is an honor to stand alongside these women who are organizing, and I'm inspired by them every day. It's no surprise to me that the calls for ceasefire are being led by women and children in this community, which mirrors the folks who are most affected by the destruction happening right now. I think we really need to be listening to women right now, and I can't help but notice. I did a little bit of research to see, you know, what the representation looks like across our represented officials and commissions across the city. As we can see, there's four out of five council members are men, five out of seven on the Planning Commission are men. Those are the two most powerful bodies in the city. The city's never had a female mayor, and I can't help but wonder if Linda Mason was up there and if she had won, what that proclamation might look like right now. Probably would look a little different. That vote on the ceasefire might look a little different. There's 39 men and 29 women across all commissions in the city. The Revenue Oversight Committee, which oversees how the money is being spent from the 2019 sales tax measure, has six men and one vacancy. So I would like to invite the women here tonight and watching to please apply, because I think we need more women on commissions across this city. There's two other vacancies. I want to encourage more women to run for office and to take powerful positions, because we will start to see more changes, we will start to see more humanity, we will see less violence with more women in positions of power. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards.
With no other speakers, and that will conclude the presentation. We've already done the consent calendar, so now we'll move on to item seven, Conductive Business. City Clerk.
Item A, consider introducing reading by title only and waiving a further reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, adopting by reference Chapter 4.98 of the Samatay County Ordinance Code Tobacco Retailer Permit, repealing and replacing in its entirety San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 6.52 Tobacco Retailer Permit in connection with such adoption, and finding the amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and set public hearing on adoption of ordinance for March 26, 2024."
We'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Peter Gilli. I'm the Community Development Director, and I'm presenting the tobacco retailer ordinance, and we'll get going as soon as the slides come up. So the agenda for this item is shown on the screen. We'll cover the objective in the background, have some brief discussion, a list of next steps, and end with a recommendation. The objective for tonight is to receive city council action to continue using the tobacco retailer program from San Mateo County Health. For some background, the County of Samatay, Samatay County Health operates a tobacco retailer program that covers the licensing and renewals, inspections, and enforcement for tobacco retailers in the county, in the county's jurisdiction. Since 2009, San Bruno has used county services for local tobacco retailers at no cost to the city, and it is not uncommon for cities, especially mid-to-small-sized cities, to rely on the county services for certain functions. Chapter 6.52 of the city's municipal code requires any tobacco retailer to have the required county license and grants the county the authority to administer their tobacco regulations within the city. In 2022, the county placed a hold on new permits and renewals while they were developing revised regulations. At that time, there were 34 tobacco retailers in San Bruno that had the proper county permits. In 2023, the county adopted new regulations, and in order for, for the city to continue to receive the county services and for these businesses to be able to... to receive the county services and for these businesses to be able to get renewals, it's incumbent on the city to adopt the updated county regulations. So just in summary, the current municipal code requires a tobacco retailer in the city to have a license from the county, but local retailers at this time cannot get a license or a renewal because of the update to the county's regulations until at which point the city adopts, adopts the new regulations. So let's talk briefly about the new regulations. In our review, there are two categories of changes that stand out the most as it, as it affects San Bruno. The first is they introduced the idea of buffers. No new license for a tobacco retailer can be issued at the sites within 1,000 feet of a youth-populated area or 500 feet of another, another tobacco retailer. And the key point is no new license. If, if the city adopts the county regulations, then those who had a license in 2022 will be allowed to renew. That's important, because as the slide shows, and this is admittedly much easier to see in the attachment to the staff report, most of our tobacco retailers are in the youth buffer, which is, is the light blue, and very many are in the orange buffer, which is, is the light orange. So if tho, those businesses weren't already there, most of them would not be able to get a license with the county. But because the rules for the county are specifically that the buffers only apply to new, new tobacco retailers, all of these businesses will, will be able to get a renewal so long as they meet the other county rules. That brings us, I think we went too far. That brings us to the second notable change, which is affects both new and existing, and therefore, in, in staff's view, is more significant. Even those who have the existing license out of 2022 would have to meet all of the new regulations about what they could sell. So whereas location-wise, the buffers will not apply if you're an existing business, the prohibition on sales will apply. The one the staff feels is most significant is that the county categorized flavored, categorized hookah as flavored tobacco, and the county prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco. Therefore, the county regulations effectively do not allow a business to, to sell hookah. And the city has one business in downtown, the Paradise Hookah Lounge, that adopting the county regulations would affect. Other cities in the county have started to adopt the county regulations. At this point, there is five. The last two, East Palo Alto Menlo Park actually adopted the county regulations earlier this Three occurred in 2023 and are listed on the screen. There are a number of cities in the county that, because of their makeup, they actually don't have a tobacco retailer, so they're not, this isn't on their radar at all. And there are some cities that have a, a local ordinance and don't use the county. To the best of our knowledge, the only city that has in the past used the county that has taken a formal action to not adopt the new county regulations is the city of Burlingame, and they are, they did decide to pursue a local program in order to allow, allow the use of hookah. Notification for this meeting was mailed to all the tobacco retailers that had the active permits as of 2022. In addition to the mailer, planning staff went to, to the Paradise Hookah Lounge to inform the owners of the situation and options and to make sure they were aware of this meeting. Next steps, in order to continue to utilize the county's services for tobacco retailer, retailers, the recommendation is that, is that the city would adopt the county regulations by reference, and that requires an extra hearing, which would be this hearing. If the council chooses to introduce the ordinance, then there would be a public hearing on, on the 26th of March and an adoption hearing on April 12th. So that brings us to the recommendation. The staff recommendation is to introduce the ordinance as read by the clerk and, and to set the public hearing for March 26, 2024. There are alternatives, and, and the text on the screen is, is directly out of the staff report. There are alternatives that, that the council is able to take, could choose not to recommend, introduce the recommended ordinance and either A, accept that San Bruno will not have local tobacco, any tobacco regulations, or B, to direct staff to develop a proposal for a local program. Staff does want to note that even if we were to create a local program that matched, matched the county regulations in every way except allowing hookah, establishing the program would still be a major task. We'd have to establish the regulations, the procedures for licensing, renewals, inspections, fines, and so on. Short-term, there'll be an opportunity cost from the staff time spent on, on developing and creating that program. That's time they would not be able to spend on, on, on other council initiatives. And then long-term, there will be an annual cost of administering the program that we conservatively believe would be about $250,000 a year, primarily because of the addition of a, additional staff person. It is possible to have the, the bulk of that cost recovered with fees. Wouldn't be 100%, but probably in the 80% to 90% range. But even with, but in order to do so, the annual costs to every local tobacco business would be significantly higher than the fees they currently pay to the county, or that they paid to the county while the program is in operation. Our, our rough estimates are, in order for, for city staff to have a program, the annual cost to every business would probably run in the range of $7,500 a year, whereas as of 2022, the, the county's charge was less than 700 each year. So for a variety of reasons, primarily about the finances and resources, we do recommend adopting, adopting the county's regulations. And with that, staff is available if there's any questions.
Thank you for the report. Questions from colleagues on the presentation that we just received? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you for the, the presentation. So am I to understand, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the map and all the exclusion zones. Obviously, it's, we've, there's hardly anywhere in, in San Bruno where a new tobacco retailer could open. If an existing tobacco retailer were to sell their business to somebody else, is that allowed, or would they have to stop selling tobacco as part of that sale? Is it, is it tied to the, to the business, or is it tied to the current owner?
It's the, it's the, it's the owner that applied for the tobacco license.
Okay. So if I, if I, if I own a mart, a mart, and I sell cigarettes, and I sell my, and I, and I sell my business to somebody else, that new, that new owner cannot, will not no longer be able to sell tobacco if they're in one of the exclusion zones? Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's my only question for right now.
If there are no other questions from council at this time, Councilmember Medina?
Thank you. Has staff been able to talk to Burlingame about their game plan on how this makes sense for them financially? Just to kind of, because I think I read in the newspaper, newspaper, there are two hookah lounges in Burlingame? Three? Okay.
All right. City Manager, you?
So my understanding, I spoke to the city manager of Burlingame last week. My understanding is they have one, but whoever just made the comment, maybe there's one exclusive, and maybe there's some mixed model where maybe there's a restaurant and a hookah, so I, I'm going to focus on the answer I got when I spoke to the city manager. She said there was one and that they were going to try to figure out the program to move forward. So that they don't have a specific plan yet, because I think the expectation was their council was going to stay with the county, and the council changed its, its position, so.
Okay. Let's see. Public comments on this item, please.
First speakers are Thomas Joseph, Bob Gordon, and Alam Gazare, and Tabitha. You would please approach the podium.
Not really. Just hold on for one sec, if you could, please. Just hold on for a sec. They're gonna, I see them trying to take care of somebody in the back. Go ahead.
Is this one working?
Yes. Hold on. Go ahead and speak.
Hello? That sounds better. All right. Cool. Thanks, everybody. All right. On this topic, I was kind of shocked to find out there's 34 tobacco retailers in this city, but you guys only want to let one cannabis shop in town. It's just kind of crazy to me. Like, when you were walking home from Cappuccino High School, did you have to walk past nine tobacco stores? Crazy. The lights are awful at the smoke shop and exotic vapes. Maybe if you have a streetlight problem downtown, you put more smoke shops down there, and it'll, no more streetlight problems. And I'll probably, I mean, it sounds like the owner of the hookah lounge is here, but it sounds like you should make an exception for a hookah lounge. A lot of consenting adults coming together to participate in an activity. I think you guys should explore more options, working with Burlingame. My research was very quick, but I think Pacifica, Foster City, and Redwood City also have hookah lounge exceptions. Pete, does that ring a bell? Anything else here? Yeah, I mean, the owner's going to speak, but not a good look to ban something that's culturally, you know, from one part of the world. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gordon, and I'm speaking as a member of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. Also, I want to think about my dear nephew, my dear cousin, excuse me, Richard, who was given his first pack of cigarettes when drafted to go to Vietnam when he was only 18, and he only lived till 60, died of emphysema. I want to commend you for considering introducing and strengthening the city's tobacco retailer license with its several provisions. Specifically, I'd like to call your attention to the tobacco-free pharmacy provision. San Bruno can join 58 other jurisdictions in California that have already ended the sale of every tobacco product in every pharmacy. Now, ending the sale of all tobacco products in every pharmacy would end the sale, for example, at, at Walgreens. Now, 58 city councils and city and county boards of supervisors have already done this, spanning from San Diego County in the south up to Del Norte County in the north, and there are 10 that have already done so in San Mateo County, and they are Daly City, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, Menlo Park, Pacifica, Portola Valley, San Carlos, City of San Mateo, South San Francisco, and unincorporated San Mateo County. So council members do have the power to change what a pharmacy is for a whole generation of young people. Pharmacy is a place to get better, not to get cancer, and hope you'll agree that cigarettes and pharmacies don't mix. Thank you very much.
Hi, how are you? We are the owners of Paradise Hookah Lounge, and we were visited by the city about this matter. You know, we've been in business for 10 years, and we've just come out swinging from a pandemic that literally had us on our, on our knees. And while we agree completely with what the gentleman before us said, you know, young underage children, being able to have access to smoking is, it's not acceptable. We have four young kids, so this is something that comes to one of the top of our lists. But we wrote an email this week to Councilwoman Medina, and thank you for getting back to us about it. I'm going to cut it short. We have a zero tolerance policy when it comes to underage, even patrons coming into our business. We don't play around with this. This is not a joke. This is a business that feeds a family, and this law would only affect us. We don't sell cigarettes. We don't sell cigars. We are only hookah. We don't sell food either, because we're not allowed to. You know, so this law to be passed, if they continue with this, would, would shut a family business rundown. Yes, people look at it from the outside as hookah, smoking nightlife, but this puts four kids through school. It feeds them. And we are, you know? Go ahead. And, and we fought, we have, yeah, we have followed every guideline for the last 10 years. We, we're not one of these types of businesses that are under the table about anything. You know, we have been straightforward. Our licenses are clear. We only sell what we are allowed to sell. We were told not to sell food, and we didn't do that. Other businesses that sell food and liquor, and we know that they're not allowed to, but we followed the rules. And if there is a way, if there is a way for this to be visited, in a sense, the way Burlingame is to, we're only, there's only one, one business that you would be, you would be helping. It's not, it's not an entire city full of hookah lounges.
There's many other smoke shops as well that are getting affected as well.
They'll be affected, but they won't have to shut down. This is basically what we're here to talk about, and if there is a way that you guys would be able to, to re-
Work with us, help with us.
Help us as a family-run business.
Especially, you know, we were closed during the pandemic for a year and invested all this money to stay alive, and now you guys want to bring this up? After we put in over $300,000?
It's, it's hard for us, so if there is a way that the city would take a look at this, and we don't mind helping. If this is going to cost somebody to work in the office, I'll work, I'll work in the office. You know, I mean, whatever it is that this needs to be discussed and talked about, we are the, we're the only people that this affects, really, truly. And I hope that there is a way that, I don't know who it is that we need to reach out to. We're kind of lost about this. You know, this, this, you guys threw a huge pin in our lives. We just suffered the loss of our daughter, and we are, we're just trying to figure out what to do next, so. Yeah, and, and we just, we don't know who, who, yeah, sorry. It's just, we don't know who to speak to, who to run to about this issue. We were actually mentioned in the booklet, so, I mean, whoever it is that we need to, if we can, sit down with them and talk to them.
We would also love to add to the store. If we're allowed to serve some coffees, expressos, even like some light foods, we would love to do that. But we were told, you know, that we're grandfathered in, and it's only as a hookah lounge. So this is what we stuck with, and that's all we did the past 10 years.
We'll be here if somebody wants to let us know what to do after this, so.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
Yes. Next speakers, Eleni Katut, Amber, I'm going to try this, Abu Garbian. Jamal Katut, Al Abdulrahim, Justin, Aneta Jamali.
I just want to start this by saying, I don't smoke. This doesn't personally affect me, but you just heard from the family that this will personally affect. There is a pattern here where you're listening to people talk about their personal experiences and just ignoring them and acting otherwise, and I really hope that that doesn't happen here today. I'm all for no flavored tobacco as it pertains to the kids and these, like, vapes that are, that they're using way too young. It's horrible, and that should fall on the, like, that's, that's- that's a bigger tobacco issue, but hookah is something that, growing up, I, all the men in my family did, the women in my family did it. I know for a fact that if Maiceto had to drive on El Camino to get his hookah from another city, that would be a lot more dangerous than if he was gonna go to the Middle East market to go get some hookah. You don't, you don't want that. So let them have their business, let them stay open, we can go back to the drawing board and figure out how to, if the rest of the county guidelines are something you want to adopt, we can, it's doable, we can do something else, but this is obviously going to be affecting family very deeply, and I don't think we want that. Thank you.
Hi. First off, I want to say I'm sorry for your guys' loss, and then, secondly, I do want to talk about how we could protect their business. These are two very hardworking people who have said time and time again throughout their speech that they followed every single guideline that you have asked of them in the past, and I'm thinking, even if you guys don't listen to what we have said and what they have said, how are you gonna help them when they have their whole entire family to feed, and then they can't afford to live anymore because their business shudders? Like, what are you gonna tell them when this is another family who will suffer at the hands of a government being corrupt? Thank you.
Hello, I don't know if I heard correctly, so if the owner of a store that sells tobacco goes to sell their store, the license is not transferable? Is that correct? So you guys are basically bankrupting every business that sells tobacco right now, because who's gonna buy their store? You know? These are multi-generational businesses that you're gonna put out of business, and I think you need to rethink that. Thank you.
Hi, just here to echo what everybody else is saying, I don't think that's, that they should have to close their business down because of this new ordinance. I think if Burlingame is doing something about it, or somebody else said Redwood City or a different city, I think we should do that. If they're feeding their kids and funding their family with this business, this business should not be shut down.
Hi, I just wanted to echo everyone else. I think there's definitely a conversation to be had. I do personally support, you know, stricter regulations on flavored tobacco so that it doesn't get in the hands of kids, but at the same time, I just think that it's unnecessarily punitive to shutter this one tobacco store while all the rest remain. It seems incredibly arbitrary, and I think that, you know, there's a conversation to be had about how we can find a way to have an exemption for this business. Already, the rest of the county regulations are going to be heavily restricting new licenses from coming in, and so, you know, there are a lot of things that we can do to, if we want to restrict the growth of tobacco and its potentially harmful effects on youth populations, there's already a lot of great provisions in this measure, but I also don't think we should, especially in San Bruno, where there is, it's just one hookah lounge, go out of our way, it seems, to just punish this one, this one business that happens to have a product that is deemed harmful while the rest of these other very harmful products remain. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to support that, your proposal to have a strict regulations about tobacco. I'm the kind of person, I'm gonna be honest, I'm anti-smoking, but issuing now a decision to close a business, that's not their fault, it's your fault from the beginning to issue that license from the beginning. Therefore, I might agree with more restrictions, controlling, but don't close a business. And let's make sure no more new licenses. Thank you.
Hi. Regulating tobacco sales is something I can personally get behind, however, moves like these, while, while intentioned, seem to miss the mark and avoid pragmatic implementation. Aside from the mess that tags along with the license transfers or the lack thereof, it pulls the rug from under legitimate businesses and deprives people of their livelihood. These people have a legitimate business and have, and have abided by all the rules sent their way. The way that this is being implemented does not properly provide an alternate means to sustain their livelihood and would punish them for something that they are not at fault for, so I very much invite everybody to revise this and reconsider. Thank you.
I, first of all, I'm not a fan of smoking, however, I am in no position to tell anybody to do what they want if they want to smoke, if that's their choice. Of course, I wouldn't want children to access tobacco, like, out of the liquor store or Walgreens, for them to be able to access that. However, Paradise Lounge is in a closed environment, and I heard they have a zero tolerance policy. So just like a bar that's down the street from them, that's open to anybody, and they can go ahead and drink and get drunk and perhaps drive and affect other people, versus a hookah lounge is non-toxic, and people can go and drive and get home safely. In addition to that, they don't have to smoke in public, and other people are, so I think having this business is relatively safe for those who choose to do and make that decision, just like a regular bar is. Again, these are, these are business owners who've had this license prior, and I don't think that it's fair that you impose this, this new law and close them out of business as it feeds their family. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I have two speaker cards, Rami Asia and Wassam Dewadi. There's two?
Oh, they just spoke, thank you.
No other speakers.
Okay, so bring it back, there were, and I think, to the director, I'm gonna summarize a couple of things, and I want you to correct me. So the Board of the, San Mateo Board of Supervisors, who oversees this program, met in their chambers and came up with the decision, and it actually was stricter, prior, to my knowledge, and then they examined it and they lessened it in some areas. So it was going to be stricter. So they currently implement the program. So that's who the city and a lot of other jurisdictions utilize that service because they do it. So it is them saying, here's, here are your new rules. Work, sells, or goes out, a new place cannot occupy that at that same, because it was to develop areas. So it isn't just here, and I wanted to kind of clarify that. But let's go to the other point of, okay, but as was brought up, they can't, they, as far as coffee, as far as snacks, that was, no, that wasn't allowed, when that's what they have to deal with, which kind of changes things. How is that? Or why is that? I mean, I know you know the answer, but-
So, so-
Please.
Your, Mr. Mayor, your description of the county's actions, I believe, are 100% accurate. Also, I think an important note is, the county happened to pass this in 2023, and so that's why we're talking about this now. It wasn't planned that it was gonna be at this point in 2024. And all of the regulation, administration of this program since 2009 has been interactions between, between the staff at county health and, and the business owners. None of these issues have been something that the city has raised, because it's, it's not our, our level of authority, so the, from a, from a policy perspective, the most unfortunate aspect of the design of the, of the county's regulations is they are telling all the cities, you either, either take the package as is with no amendments, or you do it on your own. And so, a number of speakers talked about how some cities, we, we were a city that had hookah as an exception. Then they changed the rules to be very clear that it's not allowed, and thus, if we want to use the county service, we have to use all of, all of, all of the rules, or we make, or we have, have no regulation, or we make up our own program.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of clarify, is there anything else you wanted to add from?
Well, just that there, there's, there's a cost issue.
Right, because then you have to, whatever was being done by the county, then you have to incur the cost. Yeah.
And so while, as noted, if we tried to do this at full cost recovery, the estimate is that the fees that every one of the businesses, the tobacco businesses in town will have to pay, will probably rise by a factor of 10 for us, the smaller organization, to try to do it ourselves.
To recoup costs?
Yes.
Thank you for the additional information. Now, let's turn to my colleagues for questions, comments. Councilmember Medina.
So what's the time limit here when we have to do this?
At this point, the county hasn't, hasn't, hasn't given us a time limit. If you read their ordinance explicitly, it says if you have kept up your permits and renewals, then you can stay in a buffer, so there may be a point where the county says, sorry, city, you took too long, everything needs to meet the buffer if you can join our program, that would be their, their call that they could make.
All right, I mean, clearly, let me, let me first just state, my dad was a smoker for, boy, throughout my whole childhood, and he was the only one that smoked, and there were seven of us in that house, and we all gave him a bad time all the time. Hey, Dad, quit, why don't you quit, quit, quit? He finally quit, he's still alive, he has scarring on his lungs, he's having a hard time breathing now, he's gonna be 91 hopefully in April. So I, and as well, everybody in our family, we, we just can't stand the smell of smoke, right? So just wanted to get that out of the way. However, here, you know, this is, once again, a body from the Board of Supervisors mandating something, and then having the city deal with the cost of it. And as we're, what we're gonna hear later on, is the city has enough problems now to try to take on a program like this, so I'm not saying we're not gonna try, but we're hearing this is gonna cost more money. Now, I wish the county would have, would have just had a sunset clause, and everybody that's in, continue doing what you're doing, but they're not. My question for staff would be, in, if there was one person in Burlingame game doing that work, and there was one person in San Bruno doing that work, then, yeah, I can understand it's a lot of money, but if there was a way that you could joint use of one of those staff members, it would seem like the cost would go down in half. Now, who pays for it? I'm sure we could figure that out, but it seems inefficient for us to do it and to take on the cost of that, and then to take the cost and turn it over to each of the tobacco sellers in our city, so I'd like to hear from my colleagues, I'd like to hear from staff, perhaps of talking to Burlingame about how we could come up with a program that we, we share costs, and so our costs for our retailers wouldn't go up by a factor of 10, it would be somewhat lower than that, but that's kind of my initial thoughts. Yes, the, either it's the federal government or the state, or it's Board of Supervisors telling the city what they need to do now, or you're on your own, and it's just kind of like, it's just not cool, so I'll, I'll pause and hear what my colleagues have to say.
I know you said that there's not a definitive timeline yet, but obviously, cities or towns are starting to take action because you can't hold it off forever. But we're not certain also exactly what Burlingame is doing, or how they're going to manage it, what the costs are, how are they dividing it up? For example, does it go up a factor of 10, or does it not? So that's something we don't know, we might be able to know if we review this and get that more information, but I just wanted to clarify. Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
So, as long as we're, say, you know, I think everybody, even the public started with their position on smoking. My, my father was a smoker, my father was also a firefighter in the days before they wore masks, before they would run into a burning building, and he quit way too late and died at 72 of emphysema and COPD. But my, I mean, my personal opinion about hookah is that, you know, especially in a, in a business that, you know, has a zero tolerance policy who enters their business, it's one of those things where, you know, it's, it's, you know, people can, can choose to, choose to go in there and use that product or choose not to. The problem that I have with all of this, and, and, you know, we've said it several times here in the last, in the last little bit, you know, this is not an action that the city is taking, we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, arbitrarily singling out of business, we're, we're having to respond to a changing condition here in the county where we had, you know, we've been using the, the county's program, but now that county, the county's program has changed to become more strict. And our options are to just say, there is no program, and everybody can do whatever they want, and I don't think anybody's for that, because that would mean there would be no, no regulation whatsoever to try to keep flavored tobacco out of the hands of children and all, all the other things that you get through responsible regulation, so I'm certainly not for that. And then there's, you know, you know, okay, and then we create our own local program. Doing our own local program is gonna cost a quarter million dollars a year in perpetuity for the, you know, forever, and that's not a decision to just say, yeah, let's, hey, let's do it, you know, without, you know, seriously considering the consequences of that. One of the reasons that I'm sitting here, one of the reasons that I decided to run for council, was that for, for, for far too long, we would make decisions without, pushing the, the problems of our finances out into the future and not facing those problems head on. We're gonna be, there's several items tonight that are gonna be highlighting that, that problem. And so to simply say, well, we'll just, let's just do our own program and, and, and be done with it, is not something that I can, that I can just do, I, we have to, we have to look at it. I do think that, given that Burlingame has made this decision, they made this decision very, very recently, and we haven't really had time to connect with them, given that there's not a hard deadline from the county as yet, I would suggest that maybe we take no action tonight to give staff time to connect with their, our colleagues in Burlingame to see if there's a way that we can work together to try to get the costs down for both of our cities through sharing of resources. I do think we, if I'm understanding everything correctly, we don't, they aren't holding a gun to our heads as they do this now, so I would like to take advantage of that to see if, if there's a way we can approach this more smartly before making a drastic decision.
Councilmember Salazar.
I do have a few questions, and this is an item that I've been pushing for, for a while. I know there, there were several of us on, on this council and previous councils that have had concerns about the number of tobacco businesses and our ability to regulate them, so this, this is important. I don't know that, to me, it doesn't matter much whether we run it or the county does it. It is clear, though, that there is a very definite cost differential, and in hearing some of the numbers, and I know this, this information was sort of late-breaking, and I'm not, I'm not sure who asked the question and, and who submitted that question, but that was definitely an important data point in evaluating this, and I'm wondering if we have any, I know we generally don't disclose tax revenue, but I'm wondering if, with the projections that we currently have for the businesses, if we were to adopt our own program and transfer that cost to the existing businesses, assuming they all stay in business, how big of an impact is this gonna be? they all stay in business, how big of an impact is this going to be to them? Is this a considerable portion of their revenue? I know cigarettes are already taxed. I mean, it's ridiculous how much a portion of a pack of cigarettes is taxed. So if we were to impose this additional thing on them, would it really drive them out of the city, anyway?
If I can, Vice Mayor Salazar. We've started to look at some of that, to figure out what this impact could be to a small business like this, and we are unraveling that in the moment, and so I'm going to apologize, we don't have good answers. As you know, I'm not allowed to talk about specific businesses, and their revenues and whatnot. But we can, we had to look to find the highest, the business with the greatest number of taxes paid to the city for sales tax purposes, and we had to go way down the list to find that top sales tax provider in that case. So this could have a not insignificant impact to some of these small businesses. You know, the reality is this, you know, someone's got to pay this cost. And I assume we want to stay in the business of regulating these shops, rather than allowing them to sell, you know, flavored tobaccos and things like that. So there's a cost to regulation, as we all know. The question is, what's the best bang for the buck? Is it the taxpayers overall we're talking about, or individual shop owners? And I think that's the policy question in front of the council.
Okay, thank you for that. And if we were to follow Councilmember Hamilton's suggestion of delaying this a little longer, I heard that there is a potential that if we wait too long, all the permits, just based on the timing, I imagine most of the permits right now have lapsed. Most, if not all, have lapsed.
Yes. The argument could be made that all of them have lapsed, but in my mind, as long as we tackle this in this calendar year, I think we're going to be fine.
Okay.
Can't guarantee anything, but doing this one year after they pass the ordinance seems reasonable.
Okay. And from what we know of the county ordinance, are there any appeals possible, any opportunity for grandfathering businesses that are well-established, and have been consistently licensed?
The, we had these conversations with county staff, and the only grandfathering per se is with the buffers, and the regulations in the county, the county regulations clearly say that the buffers only apply to new. All of the other regulations, both county health staff and attorneys of the county, have been very clear that the prohibitions on sales, they are, in their mind, 100%. If we want their services, we have to agree that the county is going to prohibit those things.
Okay. And from a legal standpoint, when regulations like this are in place, could the Board of Supervisors grant an exception? What does their appeal process look like? I think I saw something where there's a director that they could, that people could appeal to for fines. Is there a process where the board could override, or make an exception?
Please.
Vice Mayor Salazar, Mayor Medina. So there is a process to appeal if you violate the requirements in the ordinance. I think if the county were to allow flavored tobacco sales like hookah, that would actually not be, you know, an appeal, but I think probably an amendment to their ordinance. So those type of changes would have to be, you know, people going to the county Board of Supervisors, and asking them to amend their ordinance to allow hookah.
Okay. And my final question is, the state has a law currently banning flavored tobacco.
Yes.
If the city were to pass their own ordinance, how would we get around avoiding the state's prohibition on flavored tobaccos?
So whether we had regulations or our own program, we have to follow that law. The difference between what the state passed, and what the county passed, and the state law said that local jurisdictions can be more strict. So the state did not, the state made an exception for hookah, so long as it's enclosed and no minors. The county did not, the county put in their definitions a higher bar that counted hookah. So if we were to either not have a program, or have our own program, the flavored tobacco would still not be allowed. It's really the hookah that we could allow as part of a local program.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think the interesting thing is that, on the buffer, I'll call it grandfathered, for lack of a better term. But in the other case, hookah specifically, it's not. And I don't know where county council was, or what the rationale was, and I'm not asking you to know what, or that you've talked to county council. But I think that, I'm trying to understand that, because it seems, and I think many things that, when a rule, or sometimes a law goes into effect, it's like, okay, let's take a snapshot of what we have today, and now going forward. And that was an example of, this is San Bruno, because we could do that, but we used to have two casinos in the city. And so when one was going to go out, the councils way back then said, we're going to limit it. But they didn't shut it down. So in essence, that's where I'm having, I just don't know their thought process, and to why we grandfather one on the buffers, but we don't grandfather the others. And I'm not expecting anybody to know that answer. But that's what I'm trying to understand, from their level, unless you know something. Yeah?
So, Mr. Mayor, for the county, the county could have specifically called out one, but then they would have to answer the question, why are one of the things they are prohibiting, they're going to allow to continue for maybe a time period, but then they're not allowing the e-smoking devices, or the tobaccos in the pharmacies, or the other type of flavored tobacco? Because on one hand, it's common in zoning to amortize something, you give that business that's been there a few years, a number of years, so it's not abrupt, and they chose not to.
Yeah, and I think that, I believe, some of us were saying is, we have the information, you've given a good report, and it is what it is. It's what they have passed at the supervisory level. And then there's some other information, and we just don't have all the information, because it's evolving as we speak, with some of the other elements in the communities. Other? Councilmember Hamilton.
So I'm thinking that maybe, going along with my statement from earlier, that maybe we not take any action tonight, and maybe we can approach this kind of a two-pronged approach, that maybe we can ask staff to reach out to Burlingame, to see how we might be able to partner, to, you know, try to, to try to put together a program that we could share, in order to be able to administer the program. I would also like us, as a council, to take it to do, and maybe, and I'm hoping that maybe it's not going too far afield on the topic, and City Attorney, I'm sure will unmute herself rapidly if I do, that maybe we can send a letter to the Board of Supervisors, and we, of course, will reach out to individual members of the Board of Supervisors, asking them, you know, can we, can we amend, or can they amend their decision, and amend their program to allow a carve-out for, specifically for hookah, but specifically, that follow very specific, you know, very specific restrictions, that they must be fully enclosed, and not allow minors, and all of those same things. I don't know if the county realized their, and if the supervisors realized the impacts that this would have on existing businesses when they passed it. And I would like us to be able, you know, reach out as a council, to them, to ask them that question.
And I would say, because they're going to say that they, to me, grandfather, maybe that's the question. Because if you say, well, now, they're saying, but we want it gone, but you're saying, let it continue. I do agree that I don't think we would want to have no regulations within the community. So I'm not in favor of that. So may I, let me ask the city manager, attorney, and/or the director, if we were to not take action on this evening, and come back with some of the questions, which you may not have all the answers, what is your thought process?
So if I can, Mr. Mayor, if I can sort of
Please.
accommodate the request, but also accommodate the process moving forward. This is a unique ordinance presentation, because there's three steps to it, and normally you have two steps. So there's, you saw the second, the actual public hearing, I think, is scheduled theoretically in March, and then the, I lost track of the dates. Anyways, there's two more hearings on this, is what I'm trying to say. Well, two more meetings on it, public meetings on it. You're adopting by?
So there's the tonight, and then there's the public hearing at which the ordinance is adopted.
But then there's a third? Because of, okay, my point is, my point is, you can start to go down this pathway, as we've presented it tonight, but you can always stop, once we bring you better information. Because otherwise, we start this process all over again, if the answer is, let's move forward, anyway. So you can preserve your position, knowing that you can always take the off-ramp. If the Burlingame thing works out, some other city shows up to help us out, the Board of Supervise says, yeah, we'll make an amendment, or make an exception. I mean, there's kind of a couple more steps ahead that, so we could stay on pathway, to not, you know, let this hour-plus conversation go to waste, because it's been valuable, and a lot of good questions have come from it. And then we can get you stronger, better answers for the next meeting, whether it's scheduled, I'm really sorry, I just know that there are two more scheduled in advance ahead. So it's just a suggestion, and we could get you a lot more information, and staff could also come back and say, hey, we have better information, we're going to recommend not adopting the ordinance. I just want to preserve sort of the process that we've made thus far. Thank you.
To the chair.
Councilmember Salazar.
Looking at the county's information, they found a link to South San Francisco, and I see they also have an exception for hookah, so maybe we could reach out to them as well, being that they're an immediate neighbor to the north, and a much larger city.
And the next step says, three hearings to adopt county regulations by reference, that was tonight, was counting as one, that's where the confusion is. Second would be a public hearing recommended for March 26, and then the adoption tend to be scheduled for April 12. So I guess today is counted as one of three. Okay, all right, just wanted to clear that up. But thank you, Councilmember Salazar, for that, too, because, I mean, sometimes it's always a help for us to always not reinvent wheels, but listen, hear from our neighbors, and what they're doing. Anyway, Councilmember Hamilton.
So I'm fine with the city manager's suggestion, where we, you know, continue on the path, knowing that we can stop or amend before we get to the end. I'm fine with that, as long as we're doing these other things. So I'm not, I'm going to, before I make a really long proposal, is there appetite from my colleagues for us to send a letter to the county, to ask them to reconsider that portion of it?
As far as grandfathering, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, grandfathering.
Yeah.
Because we have one business.
I'm not saying, you know, open the door for 15 more hookahs.
I think in this, you know, in this world, too, I guess, if you don't ask, you don't know. And the worst you can be told is no. So if you're asking, you're asking me, and the answer is yes to me.
Okay.
Can we have, rather than come from us, can we have staff reach out to county council, or the county manager, and initiate the conversation there? Okay.
And then get the information on that.
To the mayor. And we could individually contact our supervisors.
Absolutely.
All right.
Of course.
Absolutely will be.
Absolutely, it doesn't prohibit.
Can I pivot here really quick? I may have misspoke, and I want to make sure I'm following some attorney's recommendation here. Let's just continue the item altogether. Don't go down the path, just stop for the moment. I mean, if we need to come back and start again, we will do that, so.
Okay. So would you, we don't need a motion to continue, we're just going to continue it, correct? All right, I think we have a consensus in the continuation, okay. But yes, we can still reach out, have coffee.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So last thing, I would encourage us to reach out to our favorite supervisors, and also encourage our colleagues you may know in Burlingame, and now South San Francisco, to do the same.
Well, they're, all of them are our favorites, all the supervisors.
Yes, they're all our favorites.
Okay, all right.
If any of them are watching, you're all our favorites.
There you go. All right, so let's move on to item B. Thank you, everybody, for the input and comments. Item B, please, city clerk.
Item B, receive report on the city's long-range forecast for fiscal years 2024 to '25 through fiscal year 2033 to '34.
Thank you, and this is to receive a report. And, I'm sorry, Peter, Peter, would you mind updating, just so we're all on the same page? The owner? Thank you. I'm having the community development director come and update, and see if you have any additional questions, just so, when you go home this evening. Right here. Peter will see you. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you very much for being here. Now CFO. And the good thing is, you're going to be there for a while, so get comfortable in the chair, the next three are yours.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Medina, council members. My name is Nick Pegaros, I'm the city's chief financial officer, and I'm here this evening to present an update to the city's forecast, which was initially presented to city council. A five-year version of this was presented to city council at your retreat on February 2nd, and we have taken that time to dive deeper into both our revenues and our expenditures, to develop a 10-year forecast that I'd like to present to you this evening. Our objective is for the council to receive the forecast for consideration, as you go through your fiscal year '25, next fiscal year's operating budget deliberations. So key to any forecast is, are the underlying assumptions that the numbers are based on. You'll see that the first and most significant assumption in the forecast is an assumption that we will maintain the service levels that have been budgeted in the current fiscal year. This includes the service expansions at the rack, when the facility opens. On that basis, we have growth factors, and you'll see here that we have some broad ranges for revenues and expenditures. What we've done is look at major categories of revenues and expenditures, and looked at historical data, as well as done some analytical forecasting to reach the range. So if you were to ask me what one revenue increase, or what one expenditure line increase is, I would say it depends, based on the year. And so there really is no, there is no singular answer in this forecast. An additional assumption is that we incorporate all known and anticipated events, and this is, as we discussed at the council retreat, some of the major elements here are housing and commercial developments that are expected to occur over the 10-year timeframe, as well as the opening of a cannabis resale shop. I want to highlight that this forecast focuses solely on the general fund. It does not have, we do not incorporate any assumptions for substantial one-time revenues or expenditures. Examples of one-time revenues that we're familiar with in recent years have been the proceeds from development agreements, as well as development impact fees. from development agreements, as well as development impact fees. The city accounts for those funds in separate funds, so not the, not the core general fund, which funds the vast majority of city services. And so when those monies come in, they will, they will not affect the forecast that I'm about to share. The other, the other element I'd like to highlight here is that Measure G is technically a general fund revenue. It's an unrestricted sales tax, local sales tax add-on. The city has placed those funds in a sub-fund of the general fund. And we go through an annual process where staff makes a presentation to the revenue oversight committee to, for spending of that money in the upcoming year. We did take the proposal that we shared with council to use the fund, the Measure G funds to augment the pavement management program for '24, '25. The Measure G committee did support that recommendation. And when we return to you in March, on March 12th, with the capital improvement budget study session, you, we will have, you will see that recommendation. I, however, do want to emphasize that, given the nature of the tax measure, that Measure G can be used for either capital or operating needs. However, staff has not made any assumption in this forecast that the council will use Measure G for operations. So of course, when we look at our forecast, recent history is, is an important lens, important indication of factors that have occurred in the past. One of the key elements that I'd like the, the council and members of the public to take away from this, from this presentation is that the, that over the last several years, we see that the, the green bar there, which is our actual revenue in excess of expenditures, had increased in the past several years. And that was due to a number of very strategic and, and thoughtful considerations by councils at the time to take advantage of opportunities to generate revenue that would support the general fund and its operations. As we, as, as we are all aware, I have sort of beat the drum in both our audited financial statements, as well as budget presentations, that we have some revenues that are at considerable risk, that really represents that uptick that we see there in the, in the green bars, most notably Walmart.com's, the lawsuit pending with Walmart.com for the, for the sales tax sharing agreement. What we see here again is the, the fruit of those efforts in the past. And, and we have begun to take measures to protect us in the future in the event that the lawsuit does not go in our favor. However, and so as we look at these, the forecasts, we're basing it on the assumptions that were used to build this year's budget, which again is to use, take the revenue growth from that agreement and put it into reserves. So as part of our forecast, we look at both the upside and the downside of, of where we might, where we might end. You'll see, you'll see here that we have some shaded regions that'll build over the, over the course of the next several slides. We're looking at the upper estimate, midpoint, and lower estimate. The upper, the upper estimate really, as you can see here, this could be any number of items that, that might come to fruition, advancing the development of the U2 campus and the impact that may have on property taxes, which are not anticipated to occur substantially in this 10-year timeframe. However, we do anticipate some incremental, incremental growth. However, if all of that development were to happen in the 10-year timeframe, we would end up in this blue, this blue phase. Other, other considerations would be, again, would be Tanforan potentially coming online sooner. However, we don't have any information to suggest that. But this is within the realm of possibilities should, should things get moving really quick on some of those developments, and they would have positive impacts on our revenue. On the negative side, clearly there are opportunities for our revenues to decrease considerably. One of the elements that we had never anticipated, I think, in, in this business was the, were events like the pandemic and how that had a detrimental impact on revenues and the community and lives. And, and we can, we can foresee that there's a possibility that, that events like that, perhaps not on the pandemic level, but other catastrophic events that may impact revenues would put us into this, this orange shaded area. And then finally, as, as we look at sort of where the midpoint is, and this is where we're hoping to focus our attention as we look to develop the budget. As I noted in the current budget, there, there is a deficit that we have, we do have a deficit that was adopted, and we've backfilled with reserves. As you're aware, we have elements of our budget that are supported by the, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And those funds will wind down in this 10-year timeframe. For, from a very conservative perspective, what we have done is assumed that those monies are no longer available for use in fiscal year '25, so next fiscal year. However, there, there is sufficient money to carry, to carry those positions through to, the, the services that were, are funded through ARPA. There is, there is sufficient funds for us to carry, for, to carry those services through to fiscal year '23. But nonetheless, I think that this council is aware, when we were approached, when we were using, when we were preparing the budget in past years, that the ARPA money is finite and that growth in other areas would potential, would, would offset the incremental increase in, in those services. Let's see here. So before I leave this slide, I just want to highlight that this is the forecast that was presented in the council packet, which was prepared or finalized last Thursday. As we've heard a couple of times this evening, there are forces at, at work that, as Seth Miller, the league representative, had shared with us, there are forces at work that are far beyond our control, that have a very significant impact on our local revenues. And we have been aware of this for many years. Those on the council who've been, who have served for, for many years are familiar with the threat of, of state budget cuts and the impacts on excess ERAF. You're, you may also be aware of the shift in property, I'm sorry, in, in vehicle licensing fees and, and actions that the state took that had very significant impacts on local revenue, promises that the state has made to backfill, to backfill those takes that they, that had occurred many years ago. And unfortunately, last Friday, I attended a meeting with our, with the county finance officers, and we were made, we were advised that we need to start planning for one of those promises that the state has made to cities, which is to backfill the vehicle licensing fee, which went away, I believe, in 2003, where the state agreed to eliminate the fee, the tax collected from, from taxpayers, and then backfill that revenue that was historically city revenue using property tax dollars. Through a convoluted mechanism and calculation, San Mateo County is one of three counties and the only county of significant population in California, that the formulas that were developed in 2003 actually work against the, the cities in, 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 in this county and those other two counties. We've, you may recall, as part of last year's budget cycle, that we were put on notice that we, that there is a threat that we would lose part of our backfill money this fiscal year, the fiscal year that we're currently in. The state, the, the county is pursuing legislation to, to request that this, that the state backfill the $70 million countywide that was, that was, that due to this formula, cities would not receive. What we're hearing, or the sense that we have out there is that, from the legislative advocates at the county level, is that they're, given the state's budget deficit, which was, as last time we spoke on this topic, it was about $63 million. It has since been, a billion dollars, sorry. $63 billion on the state level. That number has subsequently been revised upwards, over $73 billion. One of the questions is through, for our local delegation, for our electeds, when they go to Sacramento, is advocating for the, the state to take money from other general fund, state general fund purposes to backfill San Mateo County for something that is truly unique to San Mateo County in any, in any measurable way. The optimism, I didn't get the sense that there was strong optimism. Not only have we not received backfill for this current year, but the backfill grow, or the shortfall grows next year. It doubles, and it's anticipated, and we're, we're being, it's recommended that we plan for that revenue to entirely disappear over the 10-year forecast. And in this current fiscal year, we have $6 million budgeted there as VLF in lieu of property tax. So the information that I've shared, there's, there's more detail in the packet. Of course, the, the numbers have updated since the packet was generated. The purpose of this presentation really is not to receive any direction from council this evening. However, it is a lens through which staff will be evaluating its budget proposals to council. We, through the budget principles that council adopted, there are a number of elements, including maintaining core services, that we will strive to accomplish while also, while also delivering a balanced budget. This is, one thing that I can say for certain is that the forecast is, is wrong. It will be wrong. I can't, I can't, I don't think anyone can predict the future. What we're, what the information that has been shared, however, is an, is an opportunity for us to look at the longer term. What, what changes can we make today to, if, if any, can we make today, either on the revenue or on the expenditure side, that will help to avoid reaching some of those more dire deficits that were, that were shown in the, in the diagrams? And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the presentation? And again, it's not an action item, it is for, to just receive, which we are receiving. Councilmember Hamilton.
Oh, I don't know if quiet sobbing counts as a question. I guess it's more of a comment. I mean, the, the, obviously, this is not good news, and we don't, we don't blame you, Nick. You bring us, you bring us lots of news and very, very, unfortunately, it's not, it's not good news very often, but we don't hold that against you. The, I just want to state the obvious, that, you know, in the light of this, of this forecast, there are, we still have more items tonight, and then, and as we head into the budget, there, we're going to be needing to make some really rough choices on, on, we have to, we definitely have to take action on, on finding new revenue sources to help our general fund. And we also have to take action on our expenses. And so we'll see, we'll see two more items tonight to address both of those. And, and then as we enter the budget cycle, so that's my, that's my comment.
Nice.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is the reality we're facing, right? So now the state is going to not make available money that we thought we were going to have, and so we have to deal with the situation. So as Councilman Hamilton said, you know, we, we have other topics tonight, and we're going to talk about it, but thank you very much for this deep dive.
Any public comments on this item? Please? Oh, I'm sorry, I won't forget it.
Would Matt Jones and Oleni Khatut please approach the podium?
I just wanted to talk about how there's been a lot of talk tonight about how we're going to pay for things. Something I've noticed in the conversations is that we're really quick to jump to place the burden of the cost of things on San Bruno residents. And it's my understanding that a few years ago, there are two members on this council who voted against a 1% transfer tax that would have fallen, that would have placed the burden of these costs on big businesses and people who own residential buildings of over five units or more. I know that when these big companies and real estate agents heard about this, they were really quick to, to talk to you all about their concerns and to get you all on their side for this. And they're not San Bruno residents, but still, Mayor Medina and Councilmember Salazar, you voted alongside of them. And didn't even allow the residents of San Bruno to take a chance to vote on whether or not they wanted a 1% transfer tax. And I know that moving forward, the, the next item, we're going to be talking about other possibilities for ways to help with our revenue issue in this city. And I just want you guys to keep in mind how quick you are to, to be willing to place that burden on San Bruno residents. But you delay things and ask lots of questions when it's pertaining to bigger businesses. It's just a pattern I'm seeing, and I hope you can think about that. Thank you.
I want to talk about the long-term, long-term cost. It was brought to my attention that city net is a big loser for San Bruno. It costs, costs the city a lot of money. I don't know the exact figure, but I hear, I hear they're like $21 million in the hole or something like that. I mean, who subscribes to that, anyway? Thank you.
Yeah, is, are we doing public comment for, is it for B or C? For B. Okay, I don't have comments on B, I just, just for C.
I have no other speaker cards.
All right, try my, my mic. This is just a receiver report, there is no action. But as was, and I will go to the city manager to conclude, is, just in the county, I mean, the state is obviously doing what they're doing. And when they did that a long time ago, they took redevelopment, they took this, they took that in order to balance the budget. And so that is happening again because when they were flush, now they're not. Even on our county level, whether it's dispatching for the ambulances that serve us, to the fire dispatch, the county is asking for more money from all its jurisdictions. If you had the county sheriff, they're asking for more money if you had contracted with them. So everybody is feeling that and is now coming forward. And I think everybody knows that all cities are facing these challenges and are deficits. I know Redwood City has already projected out how many years it'll be in a deficit. But with that, city manager.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you, you covered it fairly well. The only thing I wanted to say is, is this is a, one more tool in our tool chest, so that as we're asking the council to make a decision in June about the budget, you've done so with all the tools that we have available to you. I think when you brought me on board, one of the things I said to you was, you know, a budget you've ultimately adopted will be something you guys fully understand and fully embrace and fully can explain to your constituents in a way that is meaningful and defensible. So we're not trying to paint a picture of complete direness, but what we're trying to paint is just a real picture. And there are some positives, there are some pluses, and as you know, your next item might be that plus. But we are just trying to get the table set, to use my term over and over that I've used moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item C, please.
Item C, receive recommendation from the ballot measure ad hoc committee and provide direction to city staff.
CS, CFO.
Thank, thank you again.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and get started while we wait for the presentation to pull up. This evening, I'm, I'm kicking off discussion, a city council discussion of the ad hoc committee's recommendation to explore ballot measure. recommendation to explore ballot measure opportunities in the November 2024. Kick off the discussion for the, for the city council's ad hoc committee on ballot revenue measure options in November 2024. We're asking that the council provide direction to staff on how to proceed with, with the ballot measure, if, if that is the council's direction. So just to tie this back into the city council strategic initiatives, this falls under a category of fiscal sustain, or fiscal stability, fiscal sustainability. Specifically, the, the ballot, the initiatives include exploring a potential ballot measure for November 2024 for stormwater funding, fire stations and fire mitigation. To facilitate that discussion and do, do a good amount of heavy lifting to explore the variety of options available to achieve that, to, to move that, those strategic initiatives forward, the mayor appointed Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilmember Hamilton to serve on an ad hoc committee who then worked with city staff, which include the city manager, the finance, the city attorney, the finance department, as well as some consultants that we have used. Brian Godby of Godby Research, which you're familiar, who'd conducted the community perception survey, as well as a few other consultants who are available this evening for technical questions, should the council have, have any. So just to put the city's funding needs in context, when we looked at updating our unfunded capital improvement, or capital improvement needs for the fiscal year 2024, we looked at the, the key areas that the city council had identified in their strategic initiatives, stormwater infrastructure being one of the more significant areas dollar-wise at $350 million, as well as the others that you see here on, on, on the screen. In addition to those identified by the strategic initiatives, the committee did explore other option, opportunities or options that were raised in the community perception survey that would, that, that require funding and maybe of, of interest in, as we, as we pursue this endeavor. One, one thing I'd like to point out is that the total here of $581 million is a very rough estimate. We clearly don't know the cost of these projects until we go to bid, until we design the projects, we go to bid. As, as the council's aware, projects, projects develop and costs increase over time. And, and so these are the best guesses, guestimates that we have currently for, for these projects. However, as mentioned in the staff report, these costs increase at minimal by, at minimum by the, by inflation and construction. So looking at, looking at the total need, the committee then looked at a variety of ballot measure options that, that might help to facilitate paying for some of the capital improvement programs that, that, that were previously listed. As, as you're aware, in the staff report, we sort of went down through the variety of options, starting with the general obligation bond. And this is a tax on proper, on real property, assessed valuation property for all property uses that pay taxes, both residential and commercial. The, for the purposes of identifying bonding capacity, in other words, how much can we pay for if we, if a measure were to pass? We did some analysis using a $30 per $100,000 of assessed value, which would clearly vary by household based on their Prop 13 value. At $30 per 100,000 of assessed value, the estimated revenue is about $3.1 million a year, which would generate bonding capacity under current interest rates of $100 million, of $100 million. I think it's important, you may see in the staff report that, that this number was previously about $124 million and we've seen a depreci, an appreciable, or a decrease in the amount of bonding capacity based solely on interest rates. So interest rates are much higher than they were last time we did this analysis and our, our buying power has gone down while the cost of, while the costs of projects have increased. So it's almost a double whammy here as we look at our, our ability to, to pay for capital projects going forward. Other areas that were discussed, however, not recommended to move forward are the utility users tax for the purposes of, for the purposes of discussion. Utility users tax is really the only general tax that, that, that might be available should the city council desire to pursue a general purpose tax similar to measure G, the measure G sales tax. The distinction between a special tax, I'm sorry, a general tax and a special tax is that the general tax can be used on operations where special taxes are limited to the purposes identified in the, in the measure. I failed to mention that general obligation bonds are, are effectively special taxes and can only be used for capital. They cannot, the funds raised through that measure cannot be used for operations and that would be everything from police to fire to, you know, to street maintenance. General obligation bonds do not allow that, those, those monies to be used for that. As, as, I'll just point out the other two parcel tax, transient occupancy tax, and then finally, measure G, sort of a second, a second take on measure G, which would be to add a, to do an additional local sales tax add-on. The reason this particular item did not come up as part of the recommendation from the committee is that we are currently, the city of San Bruno is currently at the maximum sales tax that can be levied, absent special legislation from the legislature. We did not, the, the deadline for that special legislation was the beginning of February and so we did not have the ability to pursue this particular item for November of 2024. However, it remains an option should the council be interested for the election in And of course, the recommendation from the committee was to move forward or for council to consider moving forward with the general obligation bond. For, should the council decide to give direction to move forward, there, there are costs associated with that. They're listed here. We're requesting a budget amendment that can be added on to the next agenda item should the council agree to move forward with this of $135,000. Financial engineering are the, is the muscle behind optimizing our bonding capacity, looking at a series of, a series of bond issues. Clearly, if we issue $100 million in bonds, we probably would not be able to generate or spend, we would, we would not be able to spend that money on projects the year that we issue the bonds. And so typically in these types of financings, we will issue a series, a couple of tranches, a couple of, of bonds that will be focused. And when we do that, there's, there are a number of factors that come into play as to what our bonding capacity could be. One of the more significant is interest rates. We don't know where interest rates are going to be, but we need to make some assumptions and our financial engineering consultants will help us with that. The other factor is as assessed valuation increases, there may be, there may be additional capacity there. Feasibility in communications, of course, this is a significant lift and heavy endeavor for staff to, to undertake and, and we would retain the, the services of, of a communications advisor. Polling, this will help refine what, what ballot language may come back to city council for your final approval or decision in the July timeframe, when we would put this on the ballot. And then, of course, some other costs to support the effort. By way of calendar, we're looking to, this is, if we're, if we're focusing on November 24, time is somewhat of the essence. We are, we targeted this meeting of city council to get the direction so that we can move forward with the outreach and the assessment on the bond measure, as well as prepare for the polling. Polling would occur in either April, May, May-June timeframe. Public communications would also occur at that time. And then finally, we would return to council towards the end of July, your second meeting in July, with all of the information that we've collected through this process and your final action or decision to place an item on the ballot for November. So again, the, the objective is to receive the recommendation, provide direction to staff, and we have our consultants from the, the three services plus the city attorney here to answer any questions council may have on the details. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Now, if there's from colleagues, any question on the report? Just real quick on the funding needs, and this is just me and I, obviously not an engineer or give estimates, but with the fire station 51 at 48 and fire station two at 52 at 68, it just, and I know these are estimates. It just seems very, you know, one is larger than the other. So I just don't, I was just kind of trying to understand how those numbers come out. Please.
Yes. Yes. So the differential in cost is an allowance for purchase of land for 52.
Thank you.
Which would not be a factor in 51.
If, if, if necessary or whatever. Okay. Which is undetermined at this point, therefore it's included just to be safe. Okay. Questions on the presentation? Councilmember Hamilton.
So not really a question because I was obviously there for all of this, as, as was Vice Mayor Salazar. But I, what I thought it might be helpful just to take a couple of minutes to talk about our, how we came to the, came to the decision and I would, Vice Mayor, please, please jump in if I, if I misspeak or mischaracterize something.
Do you, if I may ask, can we just see if there, I'd like to see if the members of the public, in case they want to go home and have them.
Well, yeah, the only reason, okay, I just thought that I could get out ahead of a lot of the questions, like why would you do this or why did you come to this and how did you come to, you know, to the, to the decision? Because I, I have a feeling there's going to be lots of questions in that area and I'll spend no more than three minutes on it. Up to you.
Well, thank you. Okay, let's, how about this? Let's go for your three minutes. Then we'll open it to the public, just in case they want to go home.
First thing, the first thing I want to say is that the list on the funding needs, none of these items are, are wish list items. These are all absolutely necessary items to keep San Bruno moving ahead. Our fire stations are in very poor shape, over, over 70 years old. Our stormwater, don't even need to say how, the, the needs we have there, because we, we see them when our neighborhoods flood. So the, and so I want to just, you know, the, the, the list of, the list of items to, to include are all based on absolute needs and on what we felt the, that voters could get behind wanting to fund, you know, the, the things that are important to voters as we saw and, and we were informed by the community perception survey. Looking at the particular options where we settled on the general obligation bond, the utility users tax, that really seemed, especially to me, that seemed like a dog, that, given that PG&E just raised our, raised all of our rates by a lot, adding to that seemed like a really poor idea and people would, would balk at that pretty quickly. Parcel tax isn't going to raise as much and we're, we're fairly confident that the school is going to be, the school district is going to be pursuing a parcel tax in this, in the November election. Wouldn't necessarily be a competition type of, type of deal, but the, the, the revenue from that was less than half the, that we would get from a GO bond. TOT tax, it's not worth the effort raising, raising it by 1%. We're going to get a quarter million dollars a year from that and it's, it, it wasn't worth the, the effort for the return we would get on it. And then the sales tax, while it is true that we missed the deadline, we weren't going that way anyway. The, that 10%, that 10% number is a, we would be, we would be the highest sales tax in the county. That's, and we really felt that there's a, there's a psychological barrier there where someone seeing 10% sales tax is, would be really, really bad. So I couldn't get behind that. So I just wanted to just kind of lay that out as to why we, why we came to the GO bond as our, as our, our recommendation. So I appreciate you letting me make.
Yeah, no, thank you. And you, and you did, you even came under time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if you, did I, is there anything that I missed, that I mischaracterized?
You nailed it.
All right, thank you.
All right, public, please.
Would the following speakers please approach the podium? Neda Jamali, Justin F., Matt Jones, and Alenny Katut.
So I wanted to thank Councilmember Hamilton. You were completely correct. You basically addressed every single thing I was going to say. I supported GO bond and I echo everything you're saying about everything else. The other, especially the utilities, increasing the utilities tax seems really punitive, especially with PG&E's recent increase. Sales tax would make us the highest in San Mateo County and San Bruno already is, our median income tends, falls usually in the low income bracket and sales taxes are regressive. They affect low and medium income households the most and that's the general makeup of San Bruno. So, and like you said, there's a psychological barrier to that as well. Yeah. So I thank you for your quick explanation. Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to echo some of Justin's comments that he made earlier. Thank you, Tom, for your breakdown of kind of how this is playing out. I, I know that there's a deficit that's potentially facing the city. I know that there's revenue that needs to be generated and I know that there was a sales tax that was passed a couple of years ago. Again, I just wanted to say, like Justin said, sales taxes are regressive. I would discourage going that direction. I think there's some options that maybe aren't on this list. I'm a fan of, of a general obligation bond because I, I know how badly the city needs to upgrade its infrastructure, but that also limits it only to being spent on infrastructure. So I'm wondering if there's additional revenue sources the city could pursue, either, you know, tacking them on with the same measure or pursuing a second one. And I think one of those, as I mentioned earlier, is looking at the tech industry and looking at the casinos and the folks who are making the most money in the city, instead of kind of putting the burden on, on people who, you know, the working class that's historic in this community. I, I just think, you know, the tech industry needs to be paying, paying their fair share. They use our roads, so why should they not pay for them? I, I think YouTube and, and, and I, I heard you talk about the, the ongoing legal issues with Walmart, but I just think we need to be looking at some of the people who make the most and how we can take more from them. So thank you for thinking holistically about this issue and I'm open to different funding sources. Thank you.
Any other speakers? City clerk?
No, no, there's
So, couple of things. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Salazar, Councilmember Hamilton, A, for willing to serve and thank you because that's the job they've met quick. They had at least five meetings, staff, and reviewing and going over this and Councilmember Hamilton said is obviously what's the culmination of the, the ad hoc committee with staff assisting them and that's what we just were presented tonight. One question is the, that it is just for infrastructure and then what about other options? And as far as the casino, between the 900,000 more that they now are paying and, and actually paying for a police officer, so they are, they have contributed a million plus dollars more than they had before. Just as, as an example, that's more of a recent thing, but just to go to that question that was asked by Mr. Jones.
Yes, again, to confirm that the general obligation bond is exclusively for infrastructure, which, and I, and I think the speaker may have alluded to this, that the financial problems that we discussed or the financial challenges we discussed in the previous presentation, the general obligation bond cannot help with that in any way. It's strictly focused on capital. Now that said, every dollar that we receive, see, I saw my boss leaning in, every dollar that we receive in money to support capital means a dollar less that we need to use general taxes to fund the capital. So it does all work out in the end. The sad news, however, is that it does not provide, the general obligation bond does not support ongoing, ongoing services. To the question of other tax measures that might be available, there has been media about business license taxes and how there might be some opportunity to generate revenue in that front. The business license tax is a very The business license tax is a very, can take many permutations. There are so many different ways to slice and dice that particular measure or that particular item, and calculating the revenue can be on the, can be on a challenging side. So for ongoing revenue, I would defer to the city attorney as to whether or not that's a general tax, but if a business license tax increase would be a suitable for operations or eligible for operations.
Right. So Mayor Medina, a business license tax would, is typically a general tax available for general governmental purposes. Almost any tax can be structured as a special tax, which is committed to only specific purposes. Typically, you wouldn't see that with a business license tax.
Just, just by way of the other revenue options, again, when we're looking at significant revenues, it really narrows down, the, the universe down for general taxes, narrows the universe down to utility users tax and sales tax, both of which the committee did not, as we, as we heard already, the committee did not suggest moving forward.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the body.
Just a quick follow-up. So a business license tax, would that also require a ballot initiative? Or is that, is that something that can be done through?
Yeah. Mayor Medina, Councilmember Hamilton, any tax?
Any tax.
Is going to require, if you're going to increase it, is going to require a vote of the people. And the distinction between general and special, as you know, is the vote threshold. So if it's a general tax, majority voter approval, special tax, two-thirds voter approval.
Got it. Thank you.
And just a side note, when the cinema was opening up, some folks thought, hey, why don't you add a 25 cent, shall we say, item? So you just have a 25 cent for that and having it come, but that is a tax, hence that has to go to the vote of the people in order for that to be approved. So taxes, that's how it was, that's how it's been set up. And Councilman Medina.
Thank you, and thank you Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilman Hamilton for serving. So did you guys consider an option to look at the business tax, some kind of modification? I believe Burlingame recently did it. I just Googled it. Menlo Park, Redwood City, Foster City. Just seeing if that was an option that you considered or, I mean, here's, here's the issue. We have, our needs are so large that we have to like look under every rock possible and do whatever we can to minimize the direct burden on, on the majority of our residents. And I, I would say that the, the most difficult thing about serving on the council is knowing that our needs are so great, but our revenues don't match up. And the longer we wait to, to build a fire station, I think based, what we saw at Centennial Plaza, the construction costs have gone up 10% over the last, each year. So it's going to get just more and more expensive, and I could, I could, I have a number of friends that are like, you're considering doing what on the council to raise more revenue? And the biggest problem, the problem is, what else are we going to do? Cut services when the costs get too high? How are we going to function as a city? When the city originally put in the fire stations, they didn't think, well, 50 years from now, we need to build a new one, right? And somebody has to pay for that. So I think if, hearing from staff of what, what would be the timeframe needed, because it, it may, maybe there's not enough time to do a business tax analysis, or maybe there is, I don't know. But I think it's, it's a fair question to ask, of what, what it would take and what, what amount of revenue it would generate.
Let's, let the CFO answer that question.
So I, I think fundamentally, the question, as I sort of posed it to the, to the subcommittee to help facilitate the discussion, is, you know, how, what, what is the, what are the universal, what is, what is the universe of possibilities? And if we're going into a ballot measure, is there an opportunity to, do we want to put two ballot measures on the, on the ballot? One for capital, one for operating? I didn't ask them that specific question, or I didn't encourage that, so that particular conversation, but there is a consideration of what, what will pass and, you know, how to optimize the ask that we are making to the voter, whether that be, if we look at business tax, if we double the business license tax in, in San Bruno, that would generate $2 million a year. And how that affects individual businesses, how, I, I don't know. I, I just can't, I can't articulate that without doing a great deal of analysis.
Mr. Mayor, just want to follow that up with, and I recall from the, the time we were dealing with Measure G, and it's like, go with one. Like, don't make it too complicated because, and this is the one that we figuring, three million a year. And I do agree that it doesn't pay for operations, but it's a dollar that we don't need to spend on operations that we do need to take care of, of the infrastructure that serves our city. So, all right. You got me. Thanks.
As a, as an illustration of that, I, I believe for the past couple of years, we've been supplementing the stormwater fund from the general fund, because we've had to, because the stormwater fund is underwater, for lack of a better pun. So, so that, that wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do that. And so that would, that's, that's a, a real savings of a, of a million dollars a year out of the general fund. So there's, there's all kinds of funky ways to get at, get at the, the capital versus operating argument.
Any other comments from colleagues at this time? Okay. So what staff is looking for is direction, because they're, and I think, just not just direction, I think they'd like to have action as well. Go ahead.
So one of the things that the CFO pointed out was, there's a lot more steps to take to gather more information, and not to reuse my metaphor from before, but a lot of that information gathering might lead to off-ramps. We might discover through polling that this thing absolutely does not pass. It's, you know, it's a loser from the get-go. We would come back and show that polling to you and say, you still want to move forward. And so it's one of these things where we need to take these logical steps, and so what we're asking the council to do is, excuse me, I'm sorry. What we're asking the council to do is affirm the, the, the measure idea. If you're saying yes, at the next item, we will ask for an appropriation, a mid-year appropriation, to start to pay for some of these next steps, and we'll come back to you in spring, early summer, with some of the results of the next steps. And then, again, the council will still have one or two more bites at this apple to say, let's keep going, or let's stop, because it doesn't appear to be going well. And if I can, one last thing, I really apologize. I think a lot of this is going to be a little bit of science and art mixing together, and that's what our consultants will help us with. What is the right package we put in front of the voters? Because right now, you saw that big laundry list. We're not putting that whole list in front of the voters, because that's $581 million. We get $100 million to buy what? Is it two fire stations and we're done? Is it a fire station in a park? Is it more streets and, so that's what the, the consultant will start to, to pull on, to figure out what is that sweet spot for the voter to say, I'm going to hold my nose, I don't love this, but if I'm going to vote yes, it's for these purposes. So that's what, we're going to take this, this broader laundry list and narrow it down. Council ultimately at the end will make this decision of putting the measure before the voters.
So do you just need consensus and direction, or do you actually want action?
I believe we need action.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
So I.
I apologize.
It's all right.
It's through the chair.
Yes.
The, with the consensus, what, what I will do in the next.
Presentation.
Staff report is I'll ask you to amend the recommendation.
Okay.
So I won't, I won't, I won't ask for action, I won't ask for action, but I will remind everyone that if we do put something on the ballot, all five of us united need to be the biggest cheerleaders there are. We need to put all differences aside and get out the vote and get out, get, get the message to, across the city, to every community within the city about how important this is, and all, all five of us need to be on board with that.
Well, I think next steps will determine that. Do we have consensus then? Yes, yes? Yes, yes. So Nick, we can bring that one down to the next level. So let's move on to item D, oh, I'm sorry. I need a, a motion and a second. We exceeded our time, and so if there's, because we had already started that, so I couldn't stop that.
I'll make a motion to extend.
For how long?
An hour?
I'll second.
I didn't want it to be an hour, but.
You, you almost had Nick fall back in his chair. How long is your presentation? About?
Very brief. Less, less than five minutes.
Oh. So maybe 30 minutes?
Sure. Do I hear 25?
No. Let's go 30. Is there, is that?
I will second, I will second the motion.
A motion and seconded to have a 30-minute extension to the council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 4-0. Nick, keep to your five minutes, and go.
Item 7D, consider adoption of a resolution amending the 2023 to 24 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel, again. I, I do not have a formal slide deck for this presentation. I want to walk through the highlights of this particular action item. This, this year, typically, as part of the annual budget process, the city council will adopt a mid-year budget adjustment, which captures a number of items that, that require action, including the, some of the items I'll talk about this evening, but most importantly, correcting for any audit adjustments or budget adjustments, which are quite substantial this year that I, that I'll, that I will lay out. So in, in this process, there are, we presented five tables. I'll walk through the, the five tables very quickly, but the first and foremost, the most significant this year, which the council has not been asked to do in previous years, is to make a transfer from the city's unrestricted funds in the community development, community benefit fund, to correct for deficits that have accrued in the city net fund and the stormwater enter, enterprise funds. As of the end of June 30, 20, as of June 30, 2023, the two enterprise funds held a total negative cash balance of $16.7 million. That negative cash balance reflects an informal loan from the general fund to those, to those enterprise funds to meet cash flow needs. So in order to pay their bills, to pay their payroll, the, the general fund had provided an informal loan to, to, to those two funds to maintain operations. In addition to that, both, both enterprises have negative non-cash equity positions. These are long-term liabilities resulting from everything from, from pension to other, to, to payables and, and contracts that, that have yet to be paid. So in sum, those two enterprises, we are recommending through this budget action that the city council transfer $23.67 million from unrestricted community benefit fund, Fund 166, to zero out their negative equity positions. As we've talked about in the past, both through the mid-year, as, through the retreat, as well as the, the financial statements, we are working diligently to remedy the structural challenges that both enterprises are encountering. First and foremost, on the cable side, we have rate adjustments that we're, that we are pursuing, as well as pursuing interest from the private sector to acquire the, the system, and that is progressing forward. The second, so both of those items were recommended by the city's auditor, and we are, we are suggesting council approval of that this evening. Table three and four are routine items that provide, they're non-cash items. These are providing budget adjustments to pay for contracts that we had previously executed in prior years using council appropriations. Those, those carryovers, both on the, on the capital improvement program side and the purchase order side, are fully offset by reserves that we put aside at the end of the year, so it's, it's not a, a negative to the, to the operations in the current year. And then finally, there are a series in, on table five of budget adjustments for city council consideration, and those are detailed in the attachment. The department heads are here, if you have any specific questions about their requests.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this side? Okay. Counsel, why don't you go ahead and ask your questions, make your comments, if you don't mind? And Councilmember Hamilton.
So I don't have any questions. I have many comments.
25 minutes worth.
Yeah, 20, I have 26 minutes' worth of comments, just to know. So just to kind of, just to kind of highlight the, the, the biggest whammy from that, from that staff report, and thank you, and again, we don't hold all the bad news against you, is the, is the, the, the need, because we really don't have anywhere else to get it, of transferring $23.6 million from our community benefit fund to cover losses in our stormwater enterprise and in our city net enterprise. So 2 million of that-ish is, is for the stormwater enterprise, my understanding, and the, the history there, for those who, who may not know, we identified the storm, the, my very first meeting with our former city manager after I was elected was to let me know about, of the, the state of our stormwater enterprise, and, which was, the state was bad. That the, the stormwater enterprise is funded by a property tax assessment. It's about $46 for almost all of us. It can, it can be a little larger if you have a larger property, but for most residents, it's a $46 assessment year, per year on your property taxes. That number was set in 1994 and has never been changed. We tried to get it changed by going, you have to do a, you have to do a property tax election, and we did that in 2021, and it failed bigly. We got 30, 32% I think for it, and it failed massively. So, and it was extremely disappointing, because when you think about what, what you, think about anything, is there anything in your life that you pay the same price today that you paid for it in 1994? It's, it was extremely disappointing, but it leaves us where we are. So now the stormwater enterprise is losing $1 million a year. So 2 million of it is going, so 2 million of this 23.6 is going to, to shore up those recent losses. But the other 21 million is city net. And I cannot, I cannot understate how disappointed I am, because when we, where this community benefit money came from is YouTube. YouTube has a massive amount of, of construction going on in the Bay Hill Office Park. It's welcome. We, we, we love, love having them here in San Bruno and love that they're building their, their worldwide headquarters here within our town. And as part of the, as part of that deal, they, they paid us a, a large community benefit. And at the time, the, you know, the, the thought was, oh, you know, this is money that we can spend on some of these long-term needs. We can, you know, crest more fields, or redoing the parks, or redoing, you know, whatever, all these, you know, a lot of the things that we saw on the list in the last item. Nope. Got it, we got to move it over to, to shore up, to shore up losses within city net. That's massively disappointing. I did ask, I did ask what turned out to be a silly question, which was, how much will that, how much is in the community benefit fund, and then how much is left after we move this money? And the answer is zero. It's all of it. So that's just, that's massively disappointing, but we don't have a choice. So I'm going to be, you know, voting for, for this, because there's nowhere else to get the money. And it's just, this just underscores the, the, the state that we're in, in terms of our, of our, our finances, and how, and also how important it is that we take meaningful action regarding city net. And that's one of our five strategic priorities for the year, and we're, we're, we're moving ahead with that.
Thank you. Other comments from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor. Sorry. It's okay. So Nick, regarding cables specifically, so historically, I think the. So Nick, regarding cables specifically, so historically, I think the first $10 million, $10 million worth of deficit in that enterprise was due to the fact that they didn't pay their, they had an equity contribution of $1 million per year. And for 10 years, they couldn't afford to pay it. And so it wasn't an infusion of general fund money into that, only in that they didn't contribute to the general fund. And for, we've had conversations in the past, long ago, about just forgiving the debt, writing it off. And I'm wondering, for those dollars that are merely just accounting entries, they weren't expenditures of any kind, they were just accounting placeholders, why wouldn't we consider just writing off that as bad debt and erasing it from city net's books and not pulling money, real money, from our general fund dollars that we could potentially allocate somewhere else?
So the history there, I'm somewhat familiar with. It goes back many years to the equity earnings transfer, as well as, to the equity earnings transfer and the, I believe it's called the in lieu franchise fee, or something along those lines. The, the deficit that accrued in SEDINA is, it's this bizarre thing called negative cash. And so, you know, imagine, it's almost like overdrawing your bank account, right? And just continuing to overdraw your bank account every single, every single year. That money's coming from somewhere, and where it was coming from is general fund reserves, but it wasn't formally recognized. It was just shown as the general fund has 17, let's say, for argument's sake, general fund has $10 million, city net has owes $10 million to somebody. At the end of the day, the general fund doesn't have the $10 million, because it's given that $10 million to city net. So if we write it off, the transaction would require, would deplete the general fund reserves, and we'd have to transfer the, from, in order to maintain our reserve balance, we'd transfer money from the community benefit fund to the general fund. This is bypassing that, that transaction. This is, rather than first transferring the money from the general fund to city net, depleting general fund reserves, and then backfilling general fund reserves with community benefit fund, we're skipping that middle, we're skipping that, that middle step. Is that?
So eventually, council took the action of eliminating that contribution. That million-dollar contribution went away because we knew they couldn't afford it. Had we taken that same action, or had the council then taken the same action 10 years prior, that, that wouldn't be there. So that's where I have a problem, where it's, it was an accounting entry to basically say, if cable ever has the money to pay us back, we know this is how much wasn't accounted for. But there was never really a transfer from the general fund to cable that happened. It was basically, you know, the debt was forgiven informally and displaced with the placeholder. So that's why I have trouble now, because we're talking about real dollars now being transferred over, but that wasn't the case historically. It was an accounting entry. Not all of it, and I know that there were some actual expenses where we took general fund money to cover equipment fees, but that, that particular fee, to me, seems like it should have been eliminated as soon as cable couldn't afford to pay it anymore. But it wasn't, and we carried that as an accounting thing on the books. I think the hope was that one day we would sell the enterprise and recoup some of that, and that's why previous city manager said, just leave it there.
Yeah. The, the general fund, the, I guess, so there are two, there are two pieces here. The first is that there's this equity earnings and franchise fee in lieu charge, that we technically took money from a pot that didn't have money and moved it to the general fund in order to balance the general fund budget on paper. And so this, this, this pot over here, the city net pot, kept going, digging deeper and deeper into the, into the hole. And there was, maybe there was a plan, I'm not aware of, to sell city net so that we could fill that hole, fill that hole back up. But I, the cash in the general fund is overstated by the cat, by the liabilities that exist in, by the cash deficit, and then further to the liabilities, to the extent that the cable enterprise is no longer going concern, which is the biggest issue here. And so the, I'll stop there.
And the part, the part that's confusing to me is that, you know, the million dollars that wasn't paid in every one of those years was never contributed to the general fund. The general fund was balanced in spite of not having that million dollars. At least that's the way I understood it back then, because there was no million dollars to contribute. So it was basically forgiven and just kept as a, as a placeholder, but cable never contributed that million dollars. Where would that million have come from?
It came from the general fund. It was like, so the, the general fund, if we, if we go back and we can do this, you know, we could, I think this analysis has already been done, and we could probably bring it back, but effectively, the general fund deficit in the past was lower than it should have been, because this $1 million transfer was made using money that really didn't exist. So if we look at, if we look historically, if we look at, let's just say 20, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but if we look at 2012, for example, and there was a balanced budget, it was balanced budget, that, in the general fund, that budget was balanced using $1 million from city net. So if the transfer hadn't happened, the general fund would have had a $1 million deficit. City net did not have the cash to pay that million dollars, but it was a transaction that happened anyway.
So we recorded a $1 million revenue that never happened?
Correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, I was, maybe I can add something to this. Go ahead.
No, no. If you've got, I'm starting going down the Salazar path.
Right. Well, then what happened, from what I recall, when I, right before I got on the council, started going to the meetings, and there was an effort to start reducing the amount of money to actually be required, because they weren't making the money anyhow. So it's like, hey, let's, let's reduce the fee, and let's allow city net to kind of accumulate a little bit of money so that they could, like, upgrade some of their infrastructure. And I recall at one point, being at, at our audit, where it was, it was like, it was, there's a serious problem here. And I think there was some kind of interesting shuffling earlier in the years, and then all of a sudden, it became a problem. And the, I would define it as, we, the money wasn't lost, the money was spent. We spent money to keep our city net, our San Bruno cable operable, to pay all the bills, and also to utilize their services so that the city had city internet cable and able to, and I think the city never really paid it back, or paid for those services in any meaningful way. And the hope was that, hey, once we put fiber in, we're going to be able to grow our business. But there's a reason why there's very few city-owned internet businesses. It's because it's very difficult to compete. And without investing money to go to fiber in the time where it was less expensive again, it goes back to that whole capital costs just gets so expensive that we're in the area we're at now. So I suppose we could do a financial, whole exhaustive way of getting exactly the right answer here, but the, the current situation that we're in is that we need to make it right. And we're using not all of the community benefit money. I think it's, there's still $10 million in the community benefit money, but that money's set aside for something different. But it, so it's not using all of it. It's using the YouTube money, but not all of it, so.
This transaction will bring it to zero, because everything else is discounted for. That was the answer that I received over email.
For the YouTube contribution, not for the settlement agreement contribution.
Right. So Fund 166 will still have money in it. Okay.
Yeah, and I was just going to go down the same as the Vice Mayor. And that was, yes, $1 million was coming to the city, general fund, from city net every year. And so I'm having, and the way it changed also was the CAFO report and the reporting, and the way that was done, and how it needed to be documented to make everything shown and on the ledger. But at the same time, there was about the forgiveness. There is an, it is an asset. And so I, staff, city manager is aware that I'm having a hard time with the way that this is. I understand, in the accounting world, it's like, well, if you've got a negative, you need to put a positive in order to get it to zero. Then it clears it up, and we all feel good. I just, I think there's much more behind that, and I think there's a whole other history that, and I'm not going to just repeat what the Vice Mayor said, but I'm on that same page as well. And you're welcome to say anything, CFO, or you're welcome not to, with the additional comments you've heard from the two Medina's.
Yeah. All I would offer is that this is a, what we're, what we're discussing this evening, what is, you know, what was, what was presented and reported in the financial statements is a very unusual situation. I wouldn't say it's something that I, that we see on a regular basis out there in the, in the finance world. Cable, or city net, I'm sorry, I still call it cable. City net is a very unique enterprise. And not only did we have the compounding effects of the equity transfer and the in lieu franchise, but then we also had the effects of the ability to just be competitive and pay our bills without the equity transfer, and without the, without those surcharges and transfers happening to the general fund, or going to the general fund to help support the general fund. I wish I had better news to sort of say that we don't have to move the money. The money needs to move, there are two, I think there are two options here. We either completely collapse the city net fund into general fund, and I don't even know what that would look like, but that's effectively what the auditors are saying. If we can't figure out how to make city net work, then it becomes no different than our recreation department, than our police and fire. That's one option, which just means that it competes for funds, just like every other, every other department when it comes to being able to pay its bills. That's one possibility. The other possibility is to move the money from somewhere to city net in order to balance its budget. And that money can come from Fund 166, can come from, which is this community benefit fund, it can come from the general fund. No matter where we take it from, that fund will not have as much money as it has today. And if we collapse, if we collapse city net into the general fund, the general fund will not have as much money as it has today on the books. So, you know, there, there are a couple ways that we can do this. I just, there is real cash here, unfortunately, because the books are held separately. They're independent funds. And we did send revenue from city net to the general fund that the general fund used to balance its budget in previous years. And now, you know, we're stuck with the unsavory decision of having to remedy that all in one fell swoop.
Thank you for the additional feedback, Vice Mayor.
One final question. How do we prevent something like that from happening? How do we not transfer phantom money into the general fund going forward?
So there are, well, the, first and foremost for city net is to ensure that it's, that its revenue equals its expenditures. That's the highest priority for, for this year and next year's budget. And what that means, if we can't reduce expenditures, we need to increase revenue. The trick that we're in here with city net is that when we increase revenue, we lose revenue, potentially, through customers going elsewhere. And so, you know, this isn't a core competency of, of, of public agencies in general to, to deal with the market forces when we're competing with private sector for the same, for the same client. So the first and foremost is, is develop, ensure that we have a budget that, on the city net side, that works. Now, stormwater is another issue, you know, and stormwater's in there as well, and effectively, it's the same thing. We took money from, in this case, in stormwater's case, we didn't take money from stormwater and give it to the general fund. We just spent money in the stormwater fund without any way of paying for it, other than to borrow money from the general fund. So effectively, this comes down to a budgeting practice of ensuring that we have balanced budgets, and if we don't have balanced budgets, making the adjustments necessary, whether they be on the revenue or the expenditure side, to prevent these numbers from growing. That, I just want to point out that we have a similar situation in the state and federal grant fund, right? That's a little different, because we're waiting for FEMA reimbursements. However, if FEMA does not make whole on all of our requests, we're going to have the same conversation in a couple of, hopefully not, I don't want to, but a similar conversation could occur in the future, once we learn what FEMA reimburses us. The, the alternative, Vice Mayor, would be to put a, the minute one of our funds goes negative, we just stop doing whatever it is that fund does. So city net goes negative, we turn off the system, because there's no cash to pay the bills.
Okay. I get it. Thank you.
All right. I think we've heard and gone around this topic. I think staff's heard what our, I think most of us are feeling and thinking, but the staff has come forward asking for consideration of a resolution amending the 2023, 2024 budget.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 23, 24 budget.
To the chair?
Yes.
That includes the amendment to add the $135,000?
Correct. I want to make sure that's clear, Nick.
Thank you.
The money you need for the polling.
Yes. So the request is to amend staff's recommendation to include an appropriation of $135,000 in the general fund to support the ballot measure exploration for November 2024.
I will amend my motion to include the, to include the amendment that was just read by the CFO.
Thank you.
And I will second that.
Motion, Hamilton, seconded, and Salazar on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for oh. With that, we have two other items. I'm going to ask council to be mindful of staff and everybody here. So is there any council committee report out, or can that be given to the clerk?
Be really quick.
I have a short one, too.
Short. Let's.
Very quick.
Do as best we can.
I got seven minutes, I think. So I just wanted to report out that I attended the Legis California Cities Mayors and Council Member Conference in Monterey on January 24th through 26th, where there were more than 200 council members from across the state. We covered a number of topics, from city financing, land use planning, developing effective city council and manager team, Mr. City Manager. And I also renewed the required training in AB 1234. So just want to report that out, that I did attend that in-state in Monterey.
Councilmember Hamilton.
February 22nd, I attended the Airport Land Use Committee meeting. We had two items, one for the city of Milbury and one for the city of San Bruno, to amend, to approve amendments to their general plan. Both were basically denied. The, both were found to be inconsistent with the airport's land use compatibility plan of interest here in San Bruno. Their airport's main objection was allowing housing at our future Tan Fran development site. So since the question being asked was, does the plan match up with what the airport wants? The answer to that was, was no, so I agreed with that, wearing my airport land use hat. But that will come back to us here on council for consideration to override that. So we will be able to make a decision about that.
And anything I'll submit to the clerk for staff, for time. Item nine, comments from council members. Councilmember Hamilton.
So tomorrow is the, our monthly second harvest food distribution at Bel Air. The, so the-
So the food distribution itself gets underway about 2:00. So if you or someone you know is food insecure, you can sign up on the spot if you're not already, if the family is not already signed up. We can, we always need volunteers, so if you like to volunteer or know someone who wants to volunteer, if you show up between 1:30 or 1:45 in the parking lot in front of Bel Air School, we will absolutely put you to work, and we'd love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll submit. It's stuff I can submit. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on March 12, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. Have a good rest of the evening. Meeting adjourned.